Three, and this evening's meeting of the Planning Commission is called to order. May we have the roll call, please?
It's Commissioner Frye. Commissioner Havner, Havener, I'm sorry.
Present.
Commissioner Kaiser.
Here.
Commissioner Milliman.
Present.
Commissioner Maury Bedu.
Present.
Commissioner Podar. Commissioner Will.
Present.
Vice Chair Dai.
Present.
And Chair Lockwood.
Present.
Thank you. We have a total of seven Commissioners with us. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the Director's Report. Ms. Wardell?
Thank you, Chair Lockwood. My name is Erin Wardell. I'm the Planning and Development Services Manager here at Washington County, and I have the Director's Report. First of all, this is Community Planning Month. On October 3rd, our Board of Commissioners proclaimed National Community Planning Month in Washington County. Since 2006, the American Planning Association has celebrated Community Planning Month to highlight the role of professional planners and community members, as well as the importance of good planning in our communities as we strive for prosperity, equity, balance, and cohesiveness. Planning Commissioners are an integral part of Oregon's land use process, and so we appreciate all of you. This month is for you, as well as for planning staff here at the county, so thank you. Our next update, I'm delighted about. We had a successful Senior Planner recruitment, and one of the people promoted to Senior Planner is sitting next to me, Todd Borkowitz. So really happy to see Todd move into this new role. Reza Farhoudi, who is an Associate Planner in Transportation Planning, has also been promoted to Senior Planner. So really happy to see the two of them continue to advance their careers here at Washington County. We have another Senior Planner in Transportation Planning and an Associate Planner in Community Planning who will be starting soon, and so you'll be introduced to them at one of your upcoming meetings. Tomorrow evening, there is a Boards and Commissions Open House here at the Washington Street Conference Center, which is just a couple of blocks away from here. Chair Lockwood and Todd Borkowitz will be there representing the Planning Commission and looking for people who may be interested in applying in case we have upcoming vacancies. This is also an opportunity to recruit for other county boards and commissions, so if anyone is interested, that's a great time to come by and see what boards and commissions we have available to the community. On October 3rd, the Board held its first hearing on Ordinance 897, which would make the comprehensive plan amendments necessary to reflect the River Terrace 2.0 metro-urban growth boundary expansion. The Board continued the hearing to November 3rd to consider late testimony. I also wanted to give you an update that in November, it's anticipated that the Board will review a draft land acknowledgement statement. This is something they've been working on for a number of years. They produce this in collaboration with multiple tribes from our area. Once that is considered by the Board, we will be providing more information to the Planning Commission about how the Board would like to see it implemented. For today's Planning Commission meeting, you will have a brief work session on our Significant Natural Resources work, and then we will hold our first hearing on Ordinance Number 899, the North Plains Urban Growth Boundary Expansion. For your upcoming PC meetings, here's what we're anticipating on the agenda. For November 1st, which is your day hearing, there will be a hearing on a quasi-judicial plan amendment. We'll have a work session with a more substantial update on Significant Natural Resources. We'll also have a work session on minor transportation system amendments. For November 15th, we don't have any items set yet, but we may continue the ordinance that you hear this evening, and that would likely land on November 15th. On December 6th, for your day meeting, you'll have a work session on our countywide transit study, and then your first hearing on the Minor Transportation System Plan Amendments. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there questions for Director Wardell? Not seeing any. Next item is public communication. Is there anyone here who wants to speak on a matter that's not on tonight's agenda? I'm not seeing anyone. We'll move on. Work session?
Madam Chair, we would ask the members of the public via Zoom.
Oh, that's right. If anyone's right, not here but wants to speak that way. Okay.
And if so, to raise their hand. And it looks like we do have two people raising their hand, Jim Long and Holly Hutchison. Jim, I've unmuted you. Please state your name for the record.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hello?
We can hear you, Jim. Can you hear us?
Yes, finally I can. I couldn't until now. My name's Jim Long. I did testify before you a couple of months ago with a bird and critter list. The bird and critter list is advancing. And it was about three minutes ago, four minutes ago, I actually saw a skunk. I didn't smell it, but I saw it, and I just, I relish, and lots of people do, at seeing wildlife. I was just at a City of Tigard event twenty minutes ago, and one of the planners there, as I was talking about birds and critters, she pulled out her phone and showed me a picture of this great big owl on her back fence. Anyway, I'm here to talk about and suggest and encourage that wildlife deserves habitat too, and we need to protect it. They were here before we were, and they can't be here to speak tonight. But I just want to remind you that I'll be getting this bird and critter list. It keeps getting additions as different citizens help contribute to it, and we'll be getting that out to you again soon, so that you have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now we have Holly Hutchison. Holly, you can go ahead. And you will need to unmute yourself on your end. And we are not hearing Holly.
Can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Holly, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Okay, wonderful. Thank you. I'm sorry about that. Chair Lockwood and members of the Planning Commission, thank you for your time. My name is Holly Hutchison. I'm the Executive Director of the Pacific Northwest CSA Coalition. We are a coalition of 100 farms throughout the state, including 10 in and around North Plains. In this position, I have seen firsthand the challenges farmers face when trying to access farmland and grow food. The cost of farmland is rising, and climate change is making farming even more difficult. As drought becomes more prolonged and weather extremes more common, our farmers are actively researching crops that can stand up to our changing climate. It takes agricultural land to do this. Reducing available farmland is something that should be examined extremely carefully. I applaud North Plains for responding to growth predictions and to Oregon law by examining needed changes to the urban growth boundary. However, their current plan ignores a few critical issues, primary being the loss of EFU land. The agricultural and forest compatibility analysis in their expansion study use only one evaluation criteria.
I'm sorry to break in. Holly?
This oversight does not reflect the full value of the land under consideration. This-
I'm sorry to interrupt you. You're testifying on a matter that's on the agenda. Right now, this section of the agenda is public communication for items not on the agenda. I've been advised by our council that if you testify now, your remarks will not be included with the remarks pertaining to Ordinance 899, so I'm wondering if you would like to just hold your remarks for later.
Yes, certainly. That's fine. I'm sorry.
That's okay. Sorry we didn't catch it sooner. Is there anyone else who wants to testify remotely?
We have no other hands raised.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to our work session, Significant Natural Resources update.
Thank you, Chair Lockwood, and Commissioners. Teresa Terniak, Principal Planner with Community Planning. This will be a very, very, very brief presentation, maybe the briefest you've ever heard here. So we have been working on a limited Goal Five program update, our Significant Natural Resources focused look at fish and wildlife habitat. We just wanted to let you know about a couple outreach opportunities that are coming up later this week and next. And at your next meeting, November 1st, we'll give you a fuller presentation. So this is the schedule where we are right now. We've been working on our inventory and starting to look at the economic, social, environmental, and energy analysis. And so both of those items will be the subject of a community forum, which is next week, and an online open house which starts on Friday. So we would encourage you and members of the public to participate either in person or online. The online open house will be advertised on our website, and if you are an interested party and are on our list, you will receive notification of that. The Planning Commission will receive notification. Community forum is next Tuesday, and that's 5 to 8 over at the Washington Street Conference Center. Both will include our draft inventory, so a lot of people have been interested in that. We have sent a letter to all of the property owners with natural resources shown on the inventory, and they will be coming to the meeting. They also have, there's an open house that we did specifically with an interactive map for the property owners, and we have been fielding a lot of calls on that so far this week. So more to come next week, but we just wanted to make sure you knew about those in case you wanted to attend.
Thank you. Our next item is public hearing on Ordinance 899, and we will start with a staff report.
So good evening, Chair Lockwood, PC members. I'm Todd Borkowitz, Senior Planner with Land Use and Transportation. Thank you. Today we'll be reviewing Ordinance Number 899, the proposed expansion of the North Plains Urban Growth Boundary. Here's an outline for tonight's presentation. I'll provide a brief overview of the North Plains UGB expansion process, highlight the policy framework that prescribes what cities and counties must consider for UGB expansions outside of metro, describe Ordinance 899 recommended provisions, and share the staff recommendation on Ordinance Number 899. So I want to stress that the county's role in UGB expansions for cities like North Plains that are outside of the metro, UGB is very limited. The county and city must each approve the UGB expansions for an ordinance before the expansion can be approved by the state of Oregon. This is different from the metro UGB expansion process. On that, let's move on to the next slide. Here's a map of North Plains and its location in the county. North Plains has a population of 3,441 people. The city limits of North Plains and the North Plains UGB are nearly exact, comprising about 700 acres. Like banks and gas, North Plains has its own UGB that is distinct from the metro UGB. UGB expansion in North Plains, like those for the other two cities, are governed by state rules and not by metro. Here's an overview of the process for North Plains UGB expansion. Oregon law requires cities to plan for 20 years of housing and employment growth. This is explicitly stated in statewide planning Goal 14, the goal that's the foundation of UGB expansions in Oregon. Cities must accommodate their 20-year growth forecast within the existing UGB. When that forecasted growth cannot be accommodated within the existing UGB, cities can follow a state-defined process for UGB expansion that requires the city to meet detailed criteria provided in state statute and administrative rules. North Plains followed the state-defined process. Washington County and agency partners collaborated with the city on this process. Once this analysis process is complete and the UGB expansion is proposed, state law requires that both the city and the county approve the proposed expansion through ordinance. North Plains City Council adopted its UGB expansion ordinance earlier this year. Tonight is the first public hearing for the county's ordinance, a legislative process that is similar to but distinct from the city's legislative process. So here's the proposed North Plains UGB expansion area. It's shaded in dark gray. It's approximately 855 acres, over double the 700 acres in the current North Plains UGB. The proposed UGB expansion is primarily north of US 26 and to the east and west of the current city limits. It also includes 34 acres south of US 26 and south of the current North Plains UGB. Here is the policy framework for North Plains UGB expansion. It includes state policy, most notably statewide planning Goal 14, urbanization, and other statewide planning goals and state statutes and administrative rules containing the criteria for UGB expansions outside of metro. North Plains UGB expansion is also codified in policies within the county's comprehensive plan elements, including those listed here at the bottom. As I indicated earlier, statewide planning Goal 14 is a goal that forms the foundation for UGB expansions in Oregon. Its intent is to provide for an orderly and efficient transition from rural to urban land use to accommodate urban population and urban employment inside urban growth boundaries, to ensure efficient use of land, and to provide for livable communities. The goal includes the first state criteria North Plains considered for UGB expansion. The city cooperated with agency partners like Washington County and identified a 20-year land need for employment and residential uses. North Plains has been discussing UGB expansion for much of the past decade, and in 2019 notified county staff of its interest in UGB expansion in accordance with its requirements in Goal 14 and the Washington County-North Plains Urban Planning Area Agreement. In eight meetings over the past four years, county staff collaborated with North Plains and other partners on the UGB expansion project advisory committee. The county coordinated with city North Plains and the Department of Land Conservation and Development, or DLCD, to ensure planning processes and actions of the city and county align. For the next Goal 14 requirement, North Plains demonstrated its land need to accommodate a 20-year urban population forecast. The population estimate by Portland State University's Population Research Center focused a city population of 7,076 people in 2040, an increase of 3,666 people at an average growth rate of 3.7%. In response, the city updated its Economic Opportunities Analysis and Housing Needs Analysis documents that the state requires the city maintain to demonstrate future housing and employment and land needs. The city also adopted land use efficiency measures to determine how much of this land could be accommodated within the city's existing urban growth boundary. These three analyses, the Economic Opportunities Analysis, the Housing Needs Analysis, and the Land Use Efficiency Measures, together inform the size of the proposed North Plains UGB expansion and were the basis for the city's North Plains Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Report. The city's Economic Opportunities Analysis identified a need for 687.8 acres of employment land over the next 20 years, including 172.4 acres for commercial uses and 515.4 acres for industrial uses. While some testimony has questioned the state's process, the city followed to determine these numbers. The Economic Opportunities Analysis is now a state-acknowledged document that cannot be appealed. The city's updated Housing Needs Analysis identified a need for 1,348 dwelling units over the next 20 years. The city determined 558 units could be accommodated within the existing UGB, and 790 could only be accommodated through UGB expansion. To accommodate these dwelling units and the parks, trails, open space, and schools, and public infrastructure needed to serve them, the city determined that 167.4 acres of residential land was needed. Combined, the city identified a need for an additional 855.2 acres of land to meet its housing and employment needs for the next 20 years. And I realize I threw out a bunch of numbers that weren't on the slide in front of you. Those numbers are included in the staff report for this ordinance. So Oregon administrative rules, specifically OAR 660-24-65, includes the next state criteria that North Plains considered for UGB expansion. The state requires North Plains to establish a study area to evaluate and prioritize land for inclusion in the UGB. It also allows a process for exclusion of certain lands from the study area. For cities like North Plains with a population less than 10,000, the preliminary study area must include all lands in the city's acknowledged urban reserve, if any, all lands within half-mile from the UGB, and all exception lands within one mile from the UGB. I'll explain these terms a little bit more in the coming slides. So rural lands in counties in the metro region fall into one of three types. Urban reserves, shown in blue, are lands generally adjacent to the metro urban growth boundary. Rural reserves, shown in green, are generally off-limits for UGB expansion in the near future. Undesignated lands, lands that are neither urban or rural reserve, are the only types of land available for UGB expansion in cities outside of the metro UGB. As shown here, North Plains has no designated, I'm sorry. As shown here, North Plains has no designated urban reserves and cannot expand its UGB into the rural reserves. Again, the rural reserves are shown here in green. Undesignated land, shown here in the light gray, is the only land that North Plains can expand into. While undesignated land is not further defined in state statute, rules, or planning documents that guide the reserves process, the state's Department of Land Conservation and Development confirmed that the undesignated land, regardless of the quality of farmland it contains, can be used by cities like North Plains for UGB expansion. North Plains included all of the undesignated land within its preliminary study area for UGB expansion, but identified an exclusion area that met state-defined criteria for exclusion. The city proposed to exclude a majority of the exception land, most of the area south of US 26. Exceptional lands are rural lands outside of UGBs designated for non-forest and non-agricultural uses, and that have been made unsuitable for farming or forestry over time by surrounding development. North Plains excluded the hatched area shown in this map from the preliminary study area that is generally bonded by US 26, 316th Place, and Beach and Gordon Roads. This was primarily due to restrictive covenants in two residential subdivisions surrounding the Sunset airstrip, resulting in a significant impediment to development at urban intensities. OAR 660-24-67 prescribes a priority of study lands that cities like North Plains must consider when seeking to expand their UGB. Land must be considered for inclusion in the UGB in the following order of priority. Priority one is urban reserve areas, exception lands, and non-resourced land. And non-resourced land is generally land that is not designated AF20, EFC, or EFU. Priority two is marginal lands, as defined in state statute. Priority three is farm and forest land that is not predominantly high-value farmland or does not consist of predominantly prime or unique soils. Then lastly, priority four is agricultural land that is predominantly high-value farmland. Cities may not select land that is in priority four, land that is predominantly made up of prime or unique farm soils unless there is insufficient amount of other land to satisfy this land need. So for priority one lands, as I mentioned already, the study area did not contain any urban reserve lands. It did, however, contain approximately 142 acres of exception land and non-resourced lands, including most of the south portion of the study area below US 26. Only 34 acres, however, are available for inclusion in the UGB due to the exclusion of the Sunset airstrip and the residential subdivision surrounding it. Moving on to priority two, the study area had no marginal land. Then to priority three, the study area had no predominantly low-value farmland. The remainder of the available land for UGB expansion, therefore, is predominantly high-value farmland containing prime or unique soils. And here's a map that shows that. The city of North Plains concluded that there was insufficient amount of land in the first three priority categories to meet its land needs, and that the necessary UGB expansion to meet this land need could only occur on high-value farmland that is predominantly made up of prime and unique farm soils. This map shows that Harvey are farmland, shown here in brick red, and prime soils, shown by the dotted hatch, if you can kind of see that, make up most of the study area.
Mr. Borkowitz, so just, would you just briefly explain what the finger-like pale areas are? What does that indicate?
It's shown in the legend there that is low-value farmland.
I mean, is that water-related or?
It's not water-related necessarily.
Okay. Thank you.
So the final state-defined criteria North Plains considered for UGB expansion was pursuant to Goal 14, alternative boundary locations within a study area. The city considered these four boundary location factors. They include efficient accommodation of identified land needs, orderly and economic provision of public facilities and services, comparative environmental, energy, and economic and social consequences, and then compatibility with the proposed urban land uses with nearby agricultural forest activities occurring on farm and forest land outside of the proposed UGB. The city's North Plains Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Report notes that results of the city's boundary location analyses do not provide a definitive conclusion on where North Plains UGB expansion should occur, but it does contain valuable information that could help inform decision-makers. So for the first factor, the city used three criteria. Proximity to the existing UGB, parcel size, and buildable land to determine where it can most efficiently meet its land needs for the next 20 years. Lands closer to the existing UGB and containing larger parcels and more buildable land were generally prioritized for UGB expansion over lands without these characteristics. Next, the city evaluated the next factor by separately assessing transportation and public utility serviceability for water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater drainage. Transportation was assessed through criteria developed from relevant objectives in the state administrative rules for transportation. Public utility facilities and serviceability was assessed through criteria informed by city plans and policies, master plans, and existing infrastructure mapping. Lands meeting these criteria were generally prioritized for UGB expansion over lands partially or not meeting the criteria. Next, the city compared consequences for residential and commercial development on economic, social, environmental, and energy, or ESEE, factors. Lands with fewer impacts per ESEE factors were generally prioritized for UGB expansion. Lastly, the city evaluated the compatibility of proposed urban uses with nearby agricultural and forest activities on farm and forest lands outside of the UGB by using criteria developed using data from the county, Google Earth, and the US Department of Agriculture. Compatibility was determined by identifying potential conflicts between current agricultural uses and proposed uses. Lands with the least potential conflict with surrounding rural uses were generally prioritized for UGB expansion over lands with moderate potential conflict. No lands within the study area were determined by the city to have high potential conflict with surrounding rural uses. Once the Goal 14 boundary location analyses were complete, the city considered possible growth scenarios and envisioned the best location for residential and employment uses when the city is fully built out. The North Plains City Council voted to add approximately 855 acres to the UGB, as shown above. It included 34 acres in the south portion of the study area nearest to Glen Cove Road, which was a first priority since it is exception land and must be considered first. This land would best meet the city's employment land needs. The next priority was the majority, 412 acres, of the east portion of the study area, since most of the land is most- since most of the land is most, is most development-ready. Most of this land would be, would best meet the city's employment land needs except for approximately seventy-seven acres surrounded on three sides by the current UGB, which would best meet the city's housing land needs. The third priority was approximately ninety acres to the north portion of the study area, which is the location envisioned for a large community park to help meet the city's land, housing land needs. The remaining, approximately three hundred nineteen acres, was allocated to the west portion of the study area, an area that is comparatively the least development-ready but could help meet the city's employment land needs over the next twenty years.
Could I ask another question?
Yes, Chair.
So priority means first priority to be brought into the UGB, but not first priority to be developed, right? Is that?
That, that is correct. Yeah, this is, this is just for UGB expansion.
Thank you.
Uh, so, uh, related to this map, um, during the North Plains hearings process on the UGB expansion, uh, a minor data error was identified. A point-two acre, uh, triangular-shaped portion of land bordered by US twenty-six in the south and otherwise surrounded by North Plains city limits was originally assumed to be inside the UGB and city limits, but was later found out to be outside. An adjustment to the proposed UGB was made to include this triangle, and it was included in North Plains' UGB adoption. And that area is shown in the small circle, kind of in the lower middle of the screen. So the county and city are bound by the state requirements for UGB expansion. As I stated earlier, multiple times actually, uh, each must adopt an ordinance and findings based on the UGB analyses. Findings for consistency with statewide planning goals are not required by the state for Goals Three, which is agricultural lands, Goal Four, which is forest lands, and, uh, are limited for Goal Twelve, which is transportation. County staff provided preliminary findings for other statewide planning goals and county how, county comprehensive plan goals as listed here. So in summary, county staff participated on the city's project advisory committee and reviewed the North Plains' UGB expansion report and analysis documents. County staff believes, or based on this, county staff believes that the city followed the required process for UGB expansion, undertook the appropriate analyses, prepared the required reports, and made appropriate findings. Given this, uh, the county must, uh, adopt an identical UGB alignment, uh, through, through ordinance. If the board rejects the county's draft ordinance on UGB expansion, the expansion cannot move forward. The county's ordinance number eight ninety-nine on UGB expansion proposes minor map amendments to the Rural Natural Resources Plan and the Comprehensive Framework Plan for the urban area to reflect the proposed UGB. It does not propose any land use designation changes at this time. So community input, uh, is a part of the ordinance process. The county has received extensive community feedback, um, both in support and opposition, uh, through, uh, through written testimony. Testimony received through noon today has been shared with the Planning Commission. Written testimony received after noon today, as well as a summary of all oral testimony given in tonight's hearing will be provided to the convener of the next hearing on this ordinance, either the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners, and will become part of the ordinance record. The board hearing on ordinance number eight ninety-nine is scheduled for November twenty-eighth. Consideration by DLCD would follow the county's adoption. Any local and state action on the proposed UGB expansion can be appealed. Once state, once the state acknowledges the UGB expansion and any appeals are resolved, the county will begin work on, uh, on two additional future ordinances. One would update the Washington County North Plains Urban Planning Area Agreement. The second would transfer the UGB expansion area from the rural area to the urban area, including an application of the ten, of the, uh, FD ten or Future Development, uh, Ten-Acre District Land Use Designation in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan Policies. So county staff has been informed that a referendum petition has been submitted to the city on the city's ordinance adopting the UGB. If sufficient signatures were gathered and they are authenticated by the city clerk, then the city's ordinance would likely be put to a vote on the ballot in May twenty-twenty-four. We believe we will know whether this will occur by the November fifteenth Planning Commission meeting, so tonight we are recommending that the commission take public testimony, that members, uh, ask clarifying questions, uh, and then let staff know if there is any additional information that we should include in our next staff report. And then continue the matter to your November fifteenth meeting for further consideration. And that concludes, um, tonight's presentation, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much.
And I should add that we do have, um, members of, um, the city of North Plains in the audience who would also be able to answer both clarifying questions and any questions that you have during deliberations. Thank you.
Do commissioners have questions for Mr. Berkowitz?
Mr. Berkowitz, um, the staff is recommending we take, uh, public testimony tonight and continue the hearing until the next, uh, meeting on November eighteenth, I think you said.
November fifteenth, correct.
Yes. Uh, was that because, uh, of this, uh, these signatures you mentioned? As, as opposed to like, had they not been collected, we could move forward without a continuance?
That's what we were, uh, informed by our council that, uh, i- is kind of a, a, a safe time where we, we will know, um, whether the signature gathering was successful or not.
That, that process affects our decision to continue.
Uh, i- in our opinion, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, Mr. Berkowitz, just a couple of quick questions. Could the city choose not to grow? You said that they're required to do an analysis, but, uh, city leadership in the community at large, could they essentially say, yeah, that's cool, but, um, we'd rather not?
Uh, they could do so, but they would be, um, uh, in conflict with, uh, with goal fourteen and other, other state rules.
Based upon the analysis as they completed.
That is correct.
That to some people would suggest that were self-serving. Anyway, uh, a couple of other things. I thought, uh, the airstrip wasn't included, but the golf course wasn't considered either. North Plains might want to comment on that.
Yeah, I might note that, uh, the city of North Plains will, um, come up first and have an organized presentation, so-
Save my question for them.
That might be good.
Thank you.
If I could just add, if the, what, what golf course are you referring to? Pumpkin Ridge is outside of the urban growth, is, uh, is within the, uh, rural reserve, from my understanding. And so it can't be considered.
Mr. Milliman. It has to be on light.
Got it. Sorry, first live meeting. Did you at the beginning say that state law requires the county to pass this ordinance?
Why does it consider?
Consider, okay, but doesn't require them to pass it?
In order for state law, in order for, um, the Department of Land Conservation and Development to review this ordinance, or I'm sorry, to review North Plains' UGB expansion, the expansion, um, the identical boundary has to be approved through ordinance by both the, uh, the city and, uh, and the county. So that is a requirement for the, for DLCD to even consider it.
So are there consequences if planning commissioners vote against the proposal?
Go ahead, keep, I was just letting her know that I wanted to go next.
I would say first of all, um, the Planning Commission is, makes a recommendation to the board. Should the board decide, um, to, uh, to not move forward on the ordinance, then UGB expansion cannot be considered by DLCD.
Okay. Um, and I heard you say the time to appeal the growth study has passed, so that just is what it is?
So that, that's specifically, um, related to the economic opportunities analysis. So that was, um, that was approved, uh, uh, late last year by, um, by, uh, the North Plains City Council, and then it was acknowledged in late December by the, by DLCD. So generally, um, and then the time has passed to appeal that, and generally that's, that's considered law, that's considered approved, and, um, whether the, whether the, um, whether people might question the analyses that actually went into that or the state criteria, it's, it's an acknowledged document that-
I think I got two more. You said there is a signature gathering initiative that would put something on the ballot to vote on this? Is that?
That's our understanding. I can't really speak to the details of that, but-
And are there any other ways inside of the process that folks could stop this from happening or that this would be prevented from happening?
From inside of the, um, I mean, it would-
I'm, I'm happy to jump in on these if you-
Go for it, that would be helpful.
So, um, let's back up one question if I can, Commissioner. So it's our understanding the city of, of North Plains has received a referenda petition. So referenda is in the Oregon Constitution, has been there since nineteen oh six, as I recall, and it allows citizens to file a petition to stop a law from going into effect and refer it for a public vote. And so our understanding is that such a petition has been filed. If the city recorder verifies it has adequate signatures, then that will essentially force the ordinance onto the ballot in May of next year. You see this pretty often in state laws as well. It's the same process, um, that people can file a referenda and essentially refer a, a law they, they would prefer be voted on by the people rather than by the legislature, in this case, the city council. So that's the general response to your first question. It's our understanding that, you know, in the time between now, because this just got filed, I think, yesterday, then between now and November fifteenth, when we were planning on having, uh, this hearing continued to anyways, because quite frankly, we don't think you can get through at all tonight, we can figure out whether or not that petition is in fact verified and whether there will be that vote. So that's just another piece of information that we hope to be able to provide to you on November, November fifteenth. I don't want to get into what the legalities of that would look like for the board because we're not quite there yet. And then I already forgot your next question, which was the next one in line. You were asking Todd something else that sounded very legal to.
Oh, yeah, I thought of one more also.
Okay.
But the question that we forgot is, is there, are there opportunities inside of the process to, to prevent this from happening, or is this?
Well, here's, uh, one is, is here. Obviously in front of the city council, in front of the planning commission, then in front of the Board of Commissioners, and then as, uh, Mr. Berkowitz, uh, mentioned, even if all of that passes, which is if, 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 it still has to go to the Land Conservation and Development Commission, be reviewed by the Department of Land Conservation and Development, and they would have to acknowledge it and accept it, assuming they do, so that's if, if, if. And then people could actually appeal that to the Land Use Board of Appeals and then the Court of Appeals. So there is, um, lots of procedural opportunities here.
Okay, I have a, I have a last question.
Go, go ahead.
Sorry. Uh, when and how did, like, North Plains, Gaston, and Banks get designated urban anything?
I'm going to turn that back to, to Mr. Berkowitz, because that's well beyond my knowledge.
Are you, are you specifically asking about the, the reserves process?
Uh, I, I think I'm asking when there was an urban growth boundary established for these places and why they're included in needing to plan this way.
No, I'm not actually sure when the actual urban growth boundary was established, but I, I think Teresa might have some insight.
So those three cities have been cities for quite a while. I don't know how long, but, um, North Plains can probably, um, so they can tell you when they became a city. So, um, and, uh, state law does, uh, provide for cities to have urban growth boundaries, so they do need to establish those. There is process set up for how they do that, and then process for how they change it. But it, I believe if you are a city, you need to have a urban growth boundary.
Okay, so it's because they're, they're cities, they've designated-
Right.
Cities. Okay. That's all my questions. Thanks, everyone.
Commissioner Kaiser.
Mr. Berkowitz, uh, in the event this ordinance was rejected or remanded back to the city, would they be under an obligation to continue the process with, uh, their urban growth boundary? At some point, they have to continue that process and submit and get to a spot where, uh, DLCD would accept that, correct? I mean, you can't just never expand your urban growth boundary ever again, right? You have to continue to do something. You have to put something together, uh, factually, uh, and submit it as a city, correct?
Uh, I would defer to the city what they would do, um, should the county reject, uh, this ordinance.
And then from the perspective of the, the referenda, uh, my question is, uh, wouldn't, absolutely no, uh, opposition to the fact that we're going to hold, we've got all this hearing and we've got plenty of time. But generally speaking, if that did get verified, you would still run this process concurrently no matter what, right?
Commissioner, probably in front of the Planning Commission, potentially, depending on timing. In front of the Board of County Commissioners, I would have other legal reservations about potentially enacting an ordinance on top of another ordinance that is not effective because it's been referred to the voters.
Understand. Thank you.
Commissioner Morabidu.
Thank you, Chair Lockwood. Under Oregon's statewide planning goal one, citizen involvement, um, I just want to get a better understanding of what the process was for the county. I think that there was a lot of written testimony that we read that was asking about, um, the process or, um, criticizing the process. So I was just hoping to understand more about what was done to reach out to the people of North Plains, the surrounding neighbors, and, um, what was done to, uh, get a general voice of the people that actually live there.
So first of all, um, I, I just want to clarify that staff is still reading through the, the testimony. We've received a lot of testimony, and, um, I can't necessarily speak to, to all of it at this time. Regarding, uh, what the county, uh, what the county did on the county's ordinance for notification, I would, um, defer to page five of your staff report. I'm kind of happy to kind of skim through that here for you, but, um, at the bottom it says ordinance notification, uh, was mailed. So notification for this ordinance, again, this is just specific for the county ordinance, not the, not the city's, was sent to parties on the general and individual note, notification list, service district and interested parties, um, including owners who received notice, the city of North Plains on their ordinance. So we, uh, we sent it out to people that provided testimony, um, on the, on the city's ordinance. And then, uh, yeah, and then it went through, uh, otherwise it went through the, the typical notification process that we will go through for an ordinance. But we did, uh, we did make attempts to, um, to really go beyond, um, the standard process and include people that have, um, provided testimony to North Plains, even though we weren't required to do so.
And I might add to that, so the county relied on the city's process primarily for the, the community outreach and the, um, the goal one, kind of citizen involvement. And so maybe they can speak to that when they, when they, um, when they talk to that. And the county's role really with our ordinance, um, and we participated on the city's process, and then we've, we've done our kind of standard, um, ordinance process. But the, the, the primary outreach was through the city.
Another question. So I feel really well-informed about population growth and housing needs. What I'm feeling a little bit less informed about is the long-term impact of, um, reducing farmlands and what that might look like for long-term agricultural production in our region, and also what climate change impacts will be having on, on our region, and, um, how that might, you know, the reduction in farmland might, uh, play into that. And so I was wondering, you know, there is a twenty-year population study. Is there any sort of long-term study that's been done to address the loss of agricultural land?
You know, I don't know of any specific long-term study that, that's really been done on that statewide or by municipality. I will say that UGB expansion, it's, uh, it's, it's, um, well, the Oregon land use process is really a, a balance of conservation and development. I mean, it, DLCD is the Department of Land Conservation and Development, so it's really balancing those two goals. That said, the, the metro region went through, uh, um, a process to protect- those two goals. That said, the metro region went through a process to protect most of its farmlands through the rural reserve process. The land that is being considered for UGB expansion does not include those rural reserves. It includes undesigned land that though may be farmland, was... Is area that through state rules, the city is legally allowed to expand into. And so, again, it is, as shown in that graphic, it is mostly prime farmland with unique soils. But if the city is going to meet its requirement of meeting its 20-year growth projection, that is the area that it has to expand into. Otherwise, it can't meet its state requirements.
Thank you. One more question, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, in the staff report, there is a reference to the housing needs analysis performed by the city. And within that analysis, it identifies that a quarter of multifamily housing... Oh, sorry. That a third of households currently can't afford HUD fair market rent. And also, 38% are cost burdened, 50% of those rent, and 40% of those own. In addition to that, the anticipated population growth includes a large amount of households that will have incomes below 50% or between 50% and 120% AMI. I have some major concerns about the availability of affordable housing and the development goals in terms of single detached dwellings versus attached dwellings and multifamily. If there is going to be a significant number of households that have AMIs that are, you know, 50 to 120 or lower than 50 and up to 120% AMI, and we're looking at a community that already has a substantial amount of single detached dwellings, a very small amount of multifamily housing, and the plan is to add 70% more of the whole pie, 70% of the additional dwellings will be single detached, 10 attached, and 20% multifamily. I just am having a hard time reconciling the math between what the population study is identifying as an affordable housing need and what is actually being planned.
So, Commissioner, you indicated that was in the staff report. I just want to clarify the record that that was not in the county staff report. I'm not sure if that was in one of the analyses that the city did or in the city's North Plains Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Report. Given that, assuming that is where that comes from, I would defer that to North Plains to really communicate an answer on that. But I will say that for UGB expansion, what's... What the city did was really... It's going through the initial process right now of UGB expansion by identifying a new boundary. It's not even saying that we're going to annex this area. It's not saying that we're going to comprehensively plan for this area at this time. And so, a lot of that will get defined in future planning processes. That's typically not something that is done this early in a urban growth boundary expansion process.
Yeah.
But again, the city, I think, could answer your question much better, given that it's their documents.
Okay. Yeah. Just to be clear, the staff report references the... What's it called? The housing needs analysis that was performed by the city. So, that's why I went down the rabbit hole.
Got it.
And I just want to add that I think, at this point, I understand that we're just looking at the boundary. But in other instances, such as when the planning commission in the past has looked to other places that are expanding, such as Bethany, there have been some recommendations about affordable housing and not requirements. And I think that it might be appropriate to look a little bit harder at the needs of the community and the development plans for the future.
Thank you. Again, I just want to reiterate that representatives from North Plains are behind me and are hearing this, and so hopefully they can appropriately respond to that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Commissioner Porter. Thank you, Chair Lockwood. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I have a couple of questions, concerns. We mentioned something about... I want to uplift what Commissioner Morriebeau said about community outreach, and it was mentioned that we did the county standard. Would somebody like to clarify what county standard means? Because when we were... I remember attending a meeting regarding transportation. I think it's every two years, the transportation plan, and we had received 168 out of 700,000 people talking about public transportation in Washington County, 168 people, I believe, only. And so, was that enough community outreach, people who do not have access, who do not feel that they can connect to the county or will feel that their voices are being heard by the county? So, that was... That exceeded county standard. So, if that exceeded county standard and we are saying that we did the county standard base of community outreach, what does that look like? Thanks for us.
For clarification, I indicated that we've gone beyond the standard of community outreach by contacting other individuals that were part of the North Plains UGB process. In terms of... I think Teresa might want to take on what the standard outreach on ordinance typically is.
Well, I think I had said that, that it was the county standard for an ordinance. So, we do different levels of outreach depending on what time, what kind of topic it is. If the county were doing the work, the housing needs analysis and all of that for a UGB expansion, we would have done a different kind of outreach. We were doing the outreach that we do on a typical ordinance, which is mostly through the hearing process. The city did the outreach through their process to the folks that live in and around that area. So, they will probably be able to speak to that when they come up.
I'm sorry. I still don't understand. I've heard the county did this and the county did that, but I don't know what that example looks like. Could somebody clarify that for us, that these were the specific... And it's also for the community to see, because I know as a community member, we don't really understand a lot of the... We forget language barriers, accessibility barriers. So, what does that look like for communities so that they can also understand what the county does to reach out to the community beyond what the city does?
Sure.
Because it could also be... There could be biases and prejudices because there is interest in whatever and the people who are making decisions. So, it helps the community to understand the procedure. Thank you.
So, on this one, Todd did outline the notification that we did. And for this ordinance, it was primarily notification. So, notices were sent to a number of people on our standard mailing list, to all of the people that testified at the city's hearings, to all of the people within a certain radius, I think it was maybe 250 feet, of the proposed boundary, notifying them that the city was moving forward with this ordinance and when the hearings were, and a little bit more information about what the proposal was.
Thank you. That helps a lot. I also have another question. So, considering that in... When we talk about affordability, what does affordability really, again, mean and for... At what level? If we are talking about high-tech, high wage earning, community members, workers moving into the city and into this region, that automatically inflates the prices of all of the housing. And we've seen that happen in Hillsboro, Beaverton, wherever we expanded the UGB and the growth. I remember, I think at the last meeting, I believe the city of North Plains had said that if we add more housing, then the cost of housing goes down. That's actually a wrong statement. That doesn't happen, not in a situation like this. In fact, we see more investments where people are buying houses and renting them out. Affordability, in fact, has reduced dramatically in this region. I have lived near Cornelia's Pass Road, on Cornelia's Pass Road, for 23 years. People who have lived in this area are being driven out due to unaffordability. Housing prices are almost at $450,000 for townhouses. South Hillsboro expanded with the intention that it was going to be affordable, but it is not affordable. When it comes to single-family homes, again, they're almost like $800,000 to $900,000. A community member would have to make about $165,000 a year to be able to get a mortgage to afford a home in Washington County at this moment. So, what... When we talk about affordability and cities come up with a proposal for expanding UGB that they're going to put in housing, what can county do in order to ensure that the city is... The cities are addressing that affordability criteria, that A, we have also passed the equity resolution. This does not even talk about equity. And so, what are we doing about the equity factor of who gets to live here? What is the affordability? And A, number one, transportation. How do we ensure that without adequate transportation planning, that we don't expand UGB because North Plains is not connected to any other city through public transportation? That's all.
Were you seeking any response on that?
I think we would primarily say that the... I think all of those topics will be addressed by the city through their comprehensive planning once they get through this stage. So, and then the city and the county, I think, will work together on those items. Those are county concerns as well, and so we would be working with the city on those.
And, excuse me, I just want to add something, too. You had mentioned something about supply not equaling, having anything to do with affordability. I would... So, we have a direction to increase housing from our governor right now. It's a housing emergency, and supply is part of that equation. It's not the only part of the equation. But it is acknowledged that supply does factor into housing affordability. And there are... There is substantial research that illustrates that and is really part of the governor's housing mandate. And it is... It's not just any type of housing. It's housing that meets various needs of Oregonians. But I just want to make that disconnect, that supply actually does have an influence on affordability.
Supply that is intentional, that is rooted in equity, that's rooted in understanding what the needs of the community are, and those people who have been living here are not being driven out of the community. Gentrification is real. It has hampered Portland. So, even the housing that is being built in Portland, unless they are designed to be affordable with specific requirements, they are all unaffordable at this moment, which is why a lot of Portlanders from the city are moving to Washington County because it is relatively affordable, but it is fast becoming completely unaffordable for most people. So, just... My question was, what can the county, when we are considering these plans, what can we do to ensure as a county that those factors are taken into consideration so that we put all of that into these reports and send that out to the cities when they're requesting for UGB expansion, that we... Let's first include all of these topics? If that makes any sense.
It does. It's outside of the prescribed process that the state has established for UGB expansion. Those issues the state prescribes are to be addressed later in future planning. It's just not something... While it's... Everything that you're bringing up, I feel, is very important. It's outside of really the scope of this ordinance.
Commissioner Melman.
I'll make this fast because I really... I want to hear what the community folks that came here have. What information is available at the county level regarding vacancy rates and whether housing's being utilized?
I think we can look into providing you that data.
We don't need to answer it now, but I would like to include that in the discussion. Thanks.
Any other questions for Mr. Berkowitz? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I think this is a good time for a five-minute break and then have North Plains speak to us. So I think this is a good time for a five-minute break and then have North Plains speak to us. Would people please find their seats? May I have your attention, please? We're going to resume the evening in a moment.
Excuse me, folks. Could you go ahead and please take your seats? Everyone, please take your seats. Hello, could everyone please take your seats?
Was someone reminding me about my mic?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We're ready to resume our meeting. And would our friends from North Plains please come forward?
Are you ready, Chair Lockwood?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, that works. Thank you, Chair Lockwood. I really appreciate it. And Vice Chair Dai, thank you very much for your time this evening. My name is Terri Lenahan, and I'm the mayor of North Plains.
My name is Cynthia Hurst, and I'm a resident of North Plains, and I'm here on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce.
Hi, everyone. My name is Bill Reed. I'm the finance director for the city of North Plains.
And thank you, Chair Lockwood, members of the commission, LUT staff, and everyone in the audience for being here tonight. I'm the city manager, Andy Varner. Our city planner, Steve Miller, has been sick all week, but he is online for questions later. I am...
Hello, my name is Stuart King. I'm the chairman of the Planning Commission.
Okay, thanks, Chair King. Bill and I will speak just briefly to a couple items with your questions, and then we're going to see the remaining of our time to longer-term residents who have been here through a lot of visioning and planning on this throughout the years. And hopefully that sheds a little light into some of the thinking. So again, thank you, planning commissioners, LUT staff, for your hard work on the staff report. We concur with your recommendations for approval. I also want to thank LUT staff for being a part of our project advisory committee process, eight public meetings, and a lot of diligent work since 2019. And I also want to thank the Board of Commissioners for meeting with us throughout the years to discuss this process and giving us a chance back in March 2022 to brief them on this process and the goals of the city. You know, I, I'll just touch on a couple things. There's been a few visioning processes that go along when you consider these expansions. Every city is going to go through that. The city was incorporated 60 years ago. It's gone through one urban growth boundary expansion earlier this century. The 2000, the year 2000, visioning process at that time looks very, very similar to the visioning process from 2015 that kicked off this process. Very direct through lines about having multi-generational housing, taking advantage of the location where North Plains is, having local jobs and employment. We'll talk about that. Bill will touch on that, and then our other city leaders will do that as well. We've definitely heard about the loss of farmland. We'll address some of that. As you see, North Plains is surrounded by farmland for us to grow. There's very, very little choice in the matter for us, so our job is to do it thoughtfully. The total expansion of 850 acres does represent one-half of 1% of all of that green you saw in the map, all of the rural reserves in Washington County. Our expansion represents one-half of 1% of all the rural reserves. So it's not a great amount of farmland that we would be taking off the table to provide local employment and housing in North Plains. So those are the few points I wanted to make to lead off before I cede my time to the mayor and our other leaders. And I think Bill had a couple points to go over as well.
Have control here? I guess we can go ahead and slide advance, or do I get to do that myself? Oh, there we go. Okay, so we just kind of wanted to give a little bit more information and kind of address some of the common comments that we also saw in letters and testimony that you received. So the first thing we wanted to make clear is that frankly, unlike urban growth boundary expansion experience for other cities, we have had great success over the last few years building with, building and maintaining relationships with property owners outside of our current UGB. During this process that really ramped up in 2019, four years ago, we have continually communicated with our property owners. And all around us, in, in the expansion area that we are, you had this before you here, we have overwhelming support. And actually, a number of, a number of them will be, or we expect to be testifying here, and certainly in written and verbal testimony, provided supportive testimony during our process and our planning commission and city council. So in the expansion area, we have great neighbors and partners in support of this, and we want to make that clear. And that's not always the case with an urban growth boundary expansion. You can go ahead and advance, please. Thank you. The second question, we saw a lot of comment about loss of farmland and loss of food production and the loss of the importance of keeping land in food production in Oregon. Working with our property owners, we ask them, are you, is your land farmed? If it is, what's, what does it grow each year? Is any of that food product, food crops, and how much is that grown? And what we identified on about 800 acres of our expansion area of property owners that we were able to get to in, you know, three, four or five days of kind of asking this question after seeing letters that have come in, only 8% of the acreage in our expansion area is growing any kind of food. The vast majority of it is growing grass seed and clover and fir trees. Now, when food is grown, there's actually only one farmer who's annually permanently growing food of any kind, and that's a hazelnut orchard. Any other food that's grown is actually very occasionally rotated in strawberries as well as winter wheat. So I, you know, we want to be accurate, and we want to be clear, and our property owners can answer questions and, and tell you what's grown on their property. But the expansion area around North Plains is overwhelmingly not food. And the expansion of this UGB would not impact food production in Washington County. And we want to be clear about that. So thank you. If we can go ahead and scroll to the next one, please. There's also a lot of comment or concern, or at least information that's being spread about, that North Plains is planning a 500-acre site on its west side within its new urban growth boundary. That's based on some misunderstanding. It's based on some old information, and we want to clarify that. This exhibit right here is the page right out of our economic opportunities analysis. The document that Todd mentioned was adopted by city council and was acknowledged by the state. And this details what large sites we are planning for. There's no 500-acre site for semiconductor in our urban growth boundary expansion. The Semiconductor Task Force backed last summer, identified North Plains as a potential candidate for a 500-acre site. And the city council decided, yes, the city would be a partner if something came along. But we are not, this UGB expansion planning process that continues to this day never did include a 500-acre site. And this UGB expansion currently does not include that. So we want to be clear about that because there's a lot of misinformation that persists for whatever reason. So anyway, next slide, please. I need to speed it up. Sorry about that. That might actually, oh, anyway, here's the urban growth boundary. So we'll go and turn it over to the mayor. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much, Bill. So North Plains has been my home for nearly 17 years. And over the past 15 years, I've actually dedicated an incredible amount of time volunteering on the city council and other boards and committees. And I've witnessed the challenges we face on multiple levels due to a lack of specific city services, resources, and sustainable funding. As far back as 2000, the community has talked about a vision to capture more economic growth in the region. Recently, in 2015, the community, community members, business owners, city staff, we actually developed a vision statement that guides the city council's biennial goals. This statement empowers us to see growth and independence while preserving our small-town charm and a sense of community. Preserving our town's charm is always, always top of mind. Every council and every mayor, stretching back to Butch Kendall, has looked at thoughtful and appropriate growth. In September 2021, after years of discussion, the city council approved Resolution Number 2160, establishing four priorities for the community and economic development within the UGB expansion study process. First, we aim to reverse the bedroom community trend by creating a thriving jobs-housing balance. Second, we want to grow business investments to diversify our property tax base and reduce long commutes. Third, we aim to sustainably fund community and economic infrastructure to enhance community health and diversity. And fourth, we want to expand local commercial services, which offers shorter distances for residents to travel to grocery stores, coffee shops, et cetera. In closing, I, I think you will see North Plains take shape as a well-planned, thoughtful community. We agree about smart growth, but we will do better, we will do one better than that. We intend to grow thoughtfully, intentionally, and with the best interest of our residents and our businesses. We want to keep North Plains strong and flourishing for the future. And now I'll turn this over to City Hurst.
As I said before, I'm Cynthia Hurst, and I'm a city of North Plains resident. My husband and I moved to North Plains 43 years ago. Population was 700 people. I was also mayor from 1989 to 92. And my husband has been on the Planning Commission and City Council for a total of 20 years over our 43-year term living there. Since my term as mayor, I have served on many committees and boards and continue to serve on the City Budget Committee, the Downtown Improvement Plan Project Policy Advisory Committee, and I'm also on the North Plains Parks Foundation. I am president of the North Plains Senior Plaza, which is a low-income senior apartment building that provides affordable housing for seniors. I have been a member of the Chamber of Commerce since its inception in 1986. As a business owner, I am now retired, and I am on the Board of Directors for the Chamber, and that's whom I'm speaking for today. I have seen North Plains grow from a full rural community where all of the businesses catered to all of the agricultural farmers around. And that has now changed to a housing community where people have to travel outside of the city to go to work. Big difference in 40 years. I have, I, I have continued to be involved in the city's development because I saw that the city was having to follow the development within its boundaries rather than be a leader in their own city. The county and the state and metro have always, up to this point, have always dictated what North Plains could and could not do. This is the first thing that has come from the city, by the city, for the city. All of the laws and policies that have been put in place affected North Plains without consideration of future changes. You can see that by the boundary, by our urban growth boundary now. When I was mayor in 1990, our urban growth boundary was the city limits. We're required by law to have a 20-year urban growth boundary. This is the second time that this has come to you. But this one has been made by the, by the citizens. Okay. This is a plan for the next 20 years, just like the previous UGB plan. The plan is for small and medium-scale manufacturing, warehouse, distribution, grocery, general merchandise shops. The lack of commercial services forces our residents to go outside the community for their needs. The national goal to reduce our carbon footprint goes hand in hand with providing space for business development closer to housing areas. Our residents created a vision in 2015 as the beginning of this plan eight years ago. The city has taken extra steps to involve the residents and businesses in the direction of growth. This is a plan sculpted by the residents over the past eight years and yet remains within the scope of Oregon's land use laws. I appreciate your service on Planning Commission. I know that it is a difficult job, and thank you again for listening to us.
Good evening, Chair Lockwood and commissioners. Again, I'm Stuart King and the chairman of the North Plains Planning Commission. I moved into North Plains in 1994, was appointed to the Planning Commission in 1995, was elected to the chair position in 2001, and has held that position continuously to this date. I'm one of the few people in North Plains that was involved in the last UGB expansion in the late 90s, early 2000s. I believe we have done a more efficient job this time around. Our last UGB expansion was based on housing needs. This UGB expansion is a balance of our housing needs and the need for employment ground. The city council of North Plains' vision is to change North Plains from a bedroom community to a more self-sustaining community. We pay more for services per capita than most Washington County cities. An increase in employment ground will allow the per capita cost on residents and will increase our tax base. This will also allow for employment, more employment opportunities and services for our citizens. Since our last UGB expansion, Metro introduced a five-mile buffer around the, the metro's UGB in Washington County. The land in this buffer was divided into urban and rural reserves. The rural reserves were identified to protect agricultural and farmlands for the next 20 years. identified to protect agricultural and farmlands for the next 50 years. The cities of North Plains and Banks were within this five-mile buffer, but not part of Metro. We could not participate in determining our own urban reserve areas. A different category of undesignated lands was created that did identify lands around North Plains and Banks to protect our right to determine our own urbanization for future growth. It is in these undesignated lands, which are not protected under the rural reserve designation, that we are planning our future. Urban growth expansions are costly, lengthy, and time-consuming. I believe it is more efficient and fiscally responsible to ask for more land and use less than to ask for less and need more. Thank you for your time.
Thank you all very much. Now, I thought it might be appropriate to allow, say, up to five minutes if Commissioners have questions for the team from North Plains. If not, we'll open our public hearing and have our public testimony. Yes, Commissioner Kaiser, are you willing to? Yes.
Thank you, Chair. Guys, looking at this expansion, it's an ambitious expansion. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about how you arrived at the acreage that you did. I know that Mr. Borowitz talked about it, but to some degree, that's part of your process, and you've got more knowledge on why you arrived at that. And also, if you could, to address the disparity between the amount of employment land versus residential land that is included in this proposal. It's, you know, two-thirds employment, one-third residential, and we do have, you know, some housing issues right now, you may have heard. So, if you could address that a little bit. Certainly not your responsibility to take care of that for everyone, but I'd love to kind of hear how you arrived at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, especially for the last question. I do appreciate that. One of the goals of this entire plan is looking out over the 20-year time horizon and trying to match what some of the other communities in our region have done, which is have economic development, industrial lands especially, to balance their tax base. We're already at an 85% residential tax base. North Plains, as Commissioner King said before, the last UGB expansion North Plains did was to add 800 units of housing. What we're planning in the H&amp;A, the Housing Needs Analysis, with the next expansion, would be a 50% increase over our current production. That's a 50% increase over our current housing stock. So, I know volume is not going to solve the predicament we're in, Commissioner Podar. And we had this discussion. It was a good discussion at the work session. And I do remember saying it's a multi-pronged solution. Volume will be one of those, but there's many things that need to be done region-wide, statewide, to solve this problem. And a little small community like North Plains is not going to do that. It's going to take all of us to try to do that. But we're stepping up to provide that much more housing production. And the reason for the acreage for the employment land, especially more industrial lands, which I want to be clear, is not going to be smokestacks. It's going to look more like North Hillsborough, four miles from here. It's going to look a lot more like the logistics, warehousing, perhaps food production, business park, those type of facilities. That is going to be intended over the next 20 years to balance North Plains out between housing and non-housing, a tax base, to make it much more sustainable. Because right now, we're lacking those services.
Is the disparity, just in terms of raw acreage, in part because employment parcels require greater amount of land typically? Would that be accurate?
Yeah.
Okay. Other question I have for you is, I do realize that your community is an attractive one from a housing standpoint. It's close to the urban growth boundary. It's right next to it. And it certainly makes it easy for folks to commute from your community to Hillsborough or to wherever, right? Even Vancouver. I'm sure there's people who are going both directions, right? But my question here is, I know right now you have a very large subdivision that's being constructed in your community, and it's selling incredibly quickly. Are you at all worried that this acreage will imbalance you the other way? Or are you feeling that you guys are in the balanced position that you are currently, that this amount of land is necessary to get to that balance?
Commissioner Kaiser, the reality is that we're 12 minutes away from raw laurakeers. So, no matter what we do with housing, we're going to be inundated by demand.
Yeah.
I think what the city wants to do in the next phase of this, the comprehensive planning process that will actually be kicking off, concept planning, comprehensive planning process that we kick off in a couple of months, actually, with ODOT and DLCD, is to figure out some of the nuts and bolts and the details, frankly, getting at a lot of the issues I think we heard questions about earlier. What type of housing, mixes of housing, affordability levels, different density levels and choices, close to the school, the new school that we have, all of those sorts of things. But I think the reality that we are, the reality the city works in is that no matter how much housing that we, you know, add, and there really aren't any legal controls on who can buy it. We can't say North Plains businesses or existing North Plains residents only get access to that housing. There's no control over that. So, I think it's just a matter of thoughtfully planning and phasing housing with employment over time, over a 20-year period, so that we can at least try to balance it out in terms of delivery over time.
One more question and a comment, and then I'll cede my time to the rest of the Commission. Could you talk a little bit more about, I think there's an education process just in general, folks need to understand about how this process goes. We started an urban growth boundary expansion, and this is the 50,000-square-foot level. We're saying, yes, things can be built someday in these areas. It doesn't mean it's tomorrow. From my experience, it means it's a long time from now usually. Can you talk about that process and the number of steps that you're going to go through where there's more public input? I think it's important that everyone here understands that this is not a process that ends today.
Commissioner Kaiser, great question. So, the urban growth boundary expansion before you, all this does honestly and legally is draws a new outward line around the city somewhere. Well, that's where the new line is. And it legally establishes that the city can plan for growth and annexations eventually up to that line over a 20-year period. But right now, we're just discussing a line out there. What can happen right now until annexations happen? People can continue to farm. When this line gets established as our new urban growth boundary, it does really nothing in terms of what happens with the land until the city is ready to annex. Now, having said that, we're about to kick off a process for comprehensive planning that goes through, and the city goes through the process of identifying and adopting all of the policies, the zoning codes, everything that goes with leading up to being able to annex, having annexation agreements. So, we're looking at easily a two-year process after this right here before really any annexation and dirt moving. We still have infrastructure to plan as part of this next step of the process. We then have to figure out how to finance it. We have to update our capital improvement plans. We then have to update our system development charge methodology to even figure out how to actually pay for that. And then we have all the transportation planning that we have to do during the concept planning as well. There's a ton of work that even just gets at what gets painted inside here, including price points, including how many apartments and where. All of those details are the next step. But right now, it's just about that line on the map. That's really what it's about, and it's the first step.
I just wanted to add, and staff for Washington County can chime in if they want, having gone through an expansion both in Hillsborough and also for watching the Bethany process, about, my recollection is, from the time that came in, it took a good solid six years before anything was getting built. An infrastructure plan alone can take two years. The process is very lengthy, and that's before you even get to any application being submitted, correct?
That is correct, and Erin may actually know numbers of years better than I, but six to 10 years, I think, is what we saw up in North Bethany. And they had seen that in South Hillsborough. I think that is still slowly developing out. So, it takes quite some time to do all the planning, to provide the infrastructure, to come to the different agreements with service providers, for property owners to be ready and willing and able to do anything. So, it can take quite a long time.
So, the last part of that that I'll just say is, everybody, I know it feels like it's tomorrow, right? It feels like all this land is going to have a line drawn around it, and it'll be developed tomorrow. And it'll come soon enough. I know, as a resident who's lived here all my life, it's a lot different than it used to be. But take a deep breath, think through this process. There is a million different places to have input still. Doesn't mean it's not going to be different than it is today, tomorrow, but there is a long way to go on this process. And this line, drawing this line, is not the end of the world. Let's look at it for what it is. It is a land-use process. It is the very first one in the steps to go towards expansion. That's my comments. Thank you.
I would like to get to the public hearing, but we've got a couple more. Can we, I think Commissioner Podar was first.
Thank you. I have a comment. That's not just a line on the map. We tend to invisibilize the impact of expansions, of construction, of annexation, X, Y, Z. Those are not lines. That's wildlife. That's natural space. That's people's land. That's green space. So, there's a lot more than just a line on the map. So, I think it's time that we don't call it just a line on the map. However, the other thing was that we say that this is the first step, and there are all of these things that have to be considered. I think we've been working with that mindset for a long time. How about we plan all of that and have some sort of blueprint of what we are going to do next first, and put that in now, so that we say we are able to give community an actual vision of this is what we are going to do, and this is the effort that we have put in to ensure that we are able to answer the questions. We don't actually, we keep extracting from community, but we don't give them something first. How about we give them a more clear, concise vision, plan, so that they are able to understand better what they are signing up for? Again, two-thirds for employment, one-third for housing, and it was mentioned that we cannot determine who buys housing and who buys land. We do have some requirements that can say that between $30,000, $32,000, which is $15 an hour wage, between $32,000 to $50,000, that's what we are going to ensure that people have access to, or whether it's going to be $50,000 to $100,000, or $100,000 to and above. So, we can have blocks that say between this income to this income. I don't understand percentages, because we keep working with median incomes and everything. It changes every day. But if we have blocks of income, that's how we address housing issues. So, it requires people in that category to be able to apply for housing in that space. So, those are the three comments from what I heard. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you for those comments. And I just would like to express my thoughts on the vision piece. Our community has been visionary since the 1900s, when even before North Plains was an actual incorporated city. The history of people coming to North Plains and opening up stores, building homes, having a railroad through, we have a railroad through our community. We've got the highway. I mean, they were visionaries back then, and the public process really kind of began in 2000. So, we started to vision, like, and I know that Cindy could probably even speak to when she was mayor, and they were thinking about future growth. But mayors and the community, and the councilors, and the leaders, we have been trying to envision our space as a sustainable environment for a long time. So, I appreciate your comment about the vision, but it's something that we have been working on. And there are approximately, correct me if I'm wrong on the numbers, there's about 900 people that leave North Plains on a daily basis to go to work somewhere else. And I'm one of them, right? And I would love to be able to have an office in my town where I could see my residents, right? I would love to be able to do that. But there's about, maybe it might even be up closer to 1,000, but they leave North Plains on a daily basis to work somewhere else in the metro area, Vancouver, wherever. So, the things that I hear in the community from when we have our chili cook-offs and our jingles and walking around the community and that sort of thing, is people want grocery store. They want restaurants. They want coffee shops. You know, they want these kind of things, right, that we are actually planning for right now. We're planning a grocery store. But they want these kind of things because they want to see their community sustainable, you know, and they want to be able to live, work, and play in their community. I don't know if you have any comments of when, no?
Commissioner Milliman?
Hi. I have two questions. I'm curious to know who the new person at the table is. And I know some of our longer-term residents volunteered how long they've been in North Plains, but I'm not sure I heard from everyone. So, I'd like to talk about that.
Thank you, Chair Lockwood. Commissioner Milliman, my name is Chris Crane. I'm the city attorney. A number of you had questions about the legal process earlier, so I came up to be available in case you had wanted us to address those or had follow-up questions or anything.
Thanks.
I'm sorry. You wanted to know how long people have lived in North Plains?
Yeah. I saw the two folks on my right certainly volunteered, but I've missed it if the other folks had mentioned it.
Okay. Well?
Well, I've lived there for 17 years. When I moved to North Plains, I live in a cul-de-sac, and my neighbors instantly zeroed in on me and said, "You need to run for City Council", right? "You need to step up and be a volunteer and run for City Council." And so, I have committed 15 years of my life to my community, and not just on City Council. I mean, I was on City Council for eight years. Five of those eight was council president. I'm on the senior center board. I'm on the North Plains Defense Association, the Budget Committee. I mean, I can list all the things that I've done or been a part of. I'm also the president of the Oregon Mayors Association. So, I mean, it's something that, like, I literally, my calendar is extremely full with meetings in connection with people, and I have a very, very supportive and appreciative husband.
I didn't mean you. I mean, I appreciate the extra details, but I didn't. I heard you say 17 years.
I wasn't sure.
And I'm sorry. You wanted to know more?
I think I'd like to know how long the two people in the middle of the table have lived in North Plains.
Oh, okay.
Hi. I'm city manager. I live in Hillsborough.
Okay.
Just the finance director. I've lived in Hillsborough for 21 years.
Thank you.
Commissioner Maury Biedu?
Thanks, Chair Lockwood. I just want to add on that we understand, or I understand, that this is, you know, 50,000-foot level. But I also don't think it's ever too early to talk about equity, what the vision is, the community, and that is affected by this line. I think that everyone here knows that people in rural communities, especially young people, are moving out of rural communities. This is an opportunity to provide resources for young people to stay in your rural community. Mayor, you talked about the charm of your city, and I have enjoyed traveling through North Plains and spending some time in North Plains as a CSA member in the Rural Reserve since, I think, 2008. And I just want to reiterate that, you know, my questions about affordable housing and things like that are to acknowledge that we need a line, but we also need a plan to make sure that that charm remains, that it can grow, and that the average citizen is being heard. And so, I just want to say that I understand that there is a long process, and there's a lot of inputs, and there's lots of time to say, you know, we're analyzing this, that, and the other. But I think it is really important to keep in mind that this is all truly about your community, and that, you know, the impact that it's going to have even as a line in the future, it will be a great impact. And that if you want to keep the charm of your community, that is something that, you know, we need to consider now.
Thank you for that comment, Commissioner. And I too believe that our small-town charm is a culture. I think it's a culture. I don't think it's an adjective or a verb or anything. I think it's a culture. And some examples of our small- And some examples of our small-town charm, that we have gone out of, out of our way when a family is in need. We have actually formed a group to like, make dinners for these families and, and take dinner to families. We have provided annually for like, the last several years, especially during COVID, the low-income senior housing, where we have collected goods and provided household goods and, you know, toys or dog food for, or cat food for our low-income seniors. So if people ask for help or need, and most people are pretty open about asking for that sort of thing, someone's, someone in, in the community usually jumps forward. During COVID, when we were on lockdown and we couldn't have anything on the inside, nothing, nothing to do on the inside, we had an amazing library that stepped up and the volunteers at the library stepped up and provided services for families and children. We also had community events. We had a, you know, we're known for the Elephant Garlic Festival, right? We had a really super small version of that, where we had scavenger hunts, you know, for people. So I think the small, I think the small-town charm is a culture, and it's something that we enjoy. Thank you very much.
All right. Yes, I think we've, did you want to ask? We have someone who wants to ask, who's a commissioner's, has not had a chance. Please go ahead, Vice Chair Di.
All right, thank you. I just want to ask two distinct questions. So the first one is, can you talk about your efforts, if any, on infill and how you've addressed housing using infill strategies on your, in your current boundaries?
Yeah. Well, this is where we have a, a land use consultant zooming in for us because of the question about land use efficiency measures, especially regarding housing was going to be asked. I'll just, I'm not going to have them all at my fingertips. I'm not a trained planner. But I'll just say that we went through the steps necessary to the state. They give you a matrix and to address those either in development code or in financing. So some of those steps we took in our community development code, and our city council adopted those. Some of those were just in, with state compliance. Some went beyond what HB, House Bill 2001 required of metro cities and cities that were bigger than us. We took some of those steps, too. We also did the same thing with our system development charges. When we updated those with the methodology last year, we scaled them with the size of homes. So the smaller the home, the smaller the SEC. The larger the home, the larger the system development charges. So some of those mechanisms, too.
And has that seen an appreciable increase in the amount of housing availability?
To our finance director's point, I think that availability was going to grow no matter what, just by, from our location and the demand for housing right now.
I mean, let's try to be brief. I don't want to take it. There's not a ton of space for infill to happen in North Plains. We probably get three, maybe four infill homes built annually, but that's irregular. There's just not a lot of room for it in the city. It's a, it's a small city.
Okay, thank you. And then, Madam Mayor, I was just curious, you mentioned in your testimony that there are some services that you'd like to be able to provide and how the availability of economic land could really help to provide services more for the community. I heard some testimony that said how the community itself is paying so much more for services. And I'm just curious, if this were to be implemented, the expansion, what services that you currently are not providing today, do you envision you'd be able to provide, you know, with this expanded tax base and the, the expanded ability to do more for your community?
Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec, right now, we're a part of the Hillsborough School District, but our folks, if they want any type of activity through the Parks and Rec Department, they have to come to Hillsborough to do that, but we have to pay the higher price, the out-of-city price. And also recently, we had the YMCA come in to North Plains this past summer to provide services for families and children. So if we were to be able to expand this, we would be able to expand the park and rec opportunity for our families.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
So be, before I open the public hearing, I just want to mention that a month ago, when we had our work session on this UGB expansion, I talked to a planning professor because as a planning commissioner, this had never come up for me before. So I got a little background on what goes into figuring out how to figure out a UGB expansion. And since then, I've just been reading all I can about North Plains project and trying to understand as best I could from their own documents, what, what they're planning, what the sequence of their planning has been. So with that, the public hearing is opened, and we are ready to hear from the community. So would the clerk please go ahead?
Thank you, Chair Lockwood. We have 31 in the audience signed up and perhaps more. I know we have some online, too. So we will call two people at a time to come to the table here, and I will let you know who the next two are to be ready. First, we will call Glenna Wilder and Scott Van Raden. After Glenna and Scott, we ask that Nathan Georges and Ayla Hofer be ready to come. Thank you very much.
And I'm not sure if you advised them that they have three minutes? Is that, yes?
I apologize. Each individual has up to three minutes to share. Thank you.
And please start with your name and address.
My name is Glenna Wilder, and my address is 36460 Northwest Ubel Road in North Plains. I'm giving public comment today in strong opposition to the topic that we're working on. I've lived in Washington County for 47 years, and of that, 39 years farming in Mountaindale. My husband and I produce heritage sheep and hay. I'm, I'm stunned. I have a lot more to, that I could say, but I can't say it in three minutes, so I'm going to skip a lot of it. But I'm, I'm truly stunned. North Plains doesn't provide us with any services. We're outside of the city limits. They don't do a thing for us, yet they're coming in and taking farmland away from us. And it's going to set the stage for continuing loss of farmland, just like Brookwood Parkway in Hillsborough. That's terrifying to think about. We've got a lot of farms in the Mountaindale area that, you know, it's multi-generational farms, they're, they're legacy ownership, and we're going to see that lost. I, I want to respond to something that the North Plains city planners said regarding the semiconductor factory. I think they're backpedaling. I have personally seen reams of documentation that address a proposed semiconductor factory. I've seen a map with the cross-hatched area that says in the key, "proposed semiconductor factory." So they're backpedaling. It's important for all of you to know that the land that will be assimilated into this proposed expansion area is owned by just a few people, and they're going to walk away, multimillionaires. I, I think that's an important thing to know. It's also important to know that these houses that are going to be built, I predict they're going to be snapped up by a lot of Portlanders who are trying to get out of Portland to escape the high cost of living in Portland and the drugs and the violence. The last thing I want to say in my remaining time is that there has been a complete disregard for impact to wildlife. We have, just one mile from the expansion area boundary, we have a resident herd of up to 75 elk, Roosevelt elk, who have been there for decades, for years, as long as I've been there, and I've been there for 39 years. It's under a tundra swan migration path. All of these disturbances are going to severely affect wildlife, and nobody is paying attention to that. And I'm out of time.
Thank you. Fair testimony.
My name is Scott Van Raden. I'm 66, and for 60 of those years, I've lived here in Washington County. We have
Your address?
15840 Northwest Windhill Drive in Banks. I grew up at West Union in Cornelius Pass. Our family has owned a farm in North Plains for about 50 years.
I'm, I'm sorry. I will check with our tech individual. Thank you.
It's not going to take me that long, don't worry. I'm a proponent of UGB expansion. I think the city's done an amazing job. And I think that ticks all the boxes for what our area needs, what I need, what my family needs, and what our community is going to need in the future. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we call Nathan Georges and Ayla Hofer. After they complete testimony, Dale Feek and Greg Mecklem, please. Thank you.
So my name is Nathan Georges. I live in, on Meek Road, 27480, Northwest Meek Road. So it's right just south of, of North Plains. It takes me literally less than five minutes to drive to North Plains, and I've lived there for 30 years with my wife and children. So I raise my children in that house we currently live in. So I'm well aware of what's going on. The amount of times that I've gone to North Plains to shop for food in 30 years is nothing. I've never gone once because there's no, nothing to, to offer us. And I literally can walk to North Plains. I avoid getting gas at North Plains because there's only two gas stations. I, I go down to the, to the restaurants, but that's virtually everything I do in North Plains, and I live there. So I have to drive to Fred Meyer or into Albertson's into Hillsborough when I live in North Plains. The, the thing that's really interesting is to get to my house, I have to drive through all sorts of new construction for semiconductors and new businesses that are overtaking my land. And yet, I feel kind of odd that North Plains is fighting for their survival when they're surrounded by a city like Hillsborough. Hillsborough's gobbling up land left and right, and it just seems to be just continuing. And yet, North Plains cannot be controlling their own destiny, and I think that's kind of sad. So I'm for it. I think that they need to be able to do what they should do to survive in a, an area that's growing like crazy. And I think the people behind me that have been leading this charge, they've obeyed all the laws, they've done everything that they've needed to do, even though many are against it, a lot are for it. But it's because they've done what they've needed to do to, to survive. So I feel personally that North Plains should have the opportunity to control their own destiny and to provide services and housing for people that want to live in a city that I've been proud to say that I'm in, even though I'm not quite in the, the line of North Plains. I tell everyone I'm from North Plains, and I'm proud of that. So I feel that they should be able to take this charge and to provide, again, services and housing to people not only that live there now, but also the people that want to live there. And I think they'll do a very, a, a great job at doing it the proper way.
Thank you.
I guess, I guess you haven't come to Banks to Jim's Market. We have a great market, it's only four miles away, and a liquor store. Woo-hoo! Come on down and visit us in Banks anytime. My name is Ayla Hoffler. I'm a PCP in District 301, Banks, Oregon. And I'm here today to address you. Thank you, Madam Chair Lockwood and Commissioners, for seeing us in person. This has been so long awaited and so, so needed to have you back here with us. The synergy of humans being in a room together is amazing. And thank you for all your great questions and your patience with us. So leaving that aside, I want to say that, first of all, we have a homeless emergency critical situation in the county of Washington, but it's caused by the government. You need to remember that the state is 70% owned by the government. 30% is to the rest of us. 20 of that 30% is owned by the big boys that have timber. That leaves 10% to the general public, which probably over 50% is already developed. So we're talking about fighting over 5% of the land left in this state for humans to try and continue to live where they were raised. I'm a fourth-generation logger farmer family out of Mountaindale. I've lived up here for 50 years. I've worked with the Planning Commission in North Plains in the 1990s, learned a lot from the attorney there. I do land use consulting work for the little guy. We have to have affordable housing in North Plains. There's no obvious guarantee for that. It's really bad. We do not need to change the voter status of North Plains by having a bunch of rich people come out of Portland that haven't a clue what goes on in our environment. And that food chart you saw is so wrong. We raise food for our cattle, our livestock, our, our people. You don't worry about the food on the shelf in Safeway. You better worry about whether we have farmers left to provide us food for our people, okay? We have a real problem here. You want to talk about sustainability of food? You better take care of your farmers. And you need to do an acute deep dive into looking at what farmland you really have. And you have the false graphics showing this big green area. Oh, this is all agricultural. Well, 70% of that green area is timber. You're not going to see a tractor farming and tilling on those hillsides. You do not have all that as farmland. So that is one false narrative. The other one is, they've charted in their, in their notes, oh, they're only growing flowers in the fields along Sunset Highway. We're not disturbing anything important. Are you kidding me? They're just trying to wash over the importance of our Class I soils that are the best in the world, our livestock, and you were right, Madam Chair, those lines you saw, those are water. We have some of the most beautiful wetlands in the area, okay? And they need to stay that way for our, our livelihood. And I'm also going to say that, you know, the Planning Commission is, everybody, I believe, on the commission lives in the UGB.
So we're, we're running, you're running out of time.
Okay, so I guess my, the main thing I want to walk away saying is that we don't need more condos and people and cars in North Plains, okay? And we need to have some recommendations, like, you need to give a thousand-foot notice in rural areas when you're doing a UGB change. You need to do a hydraulic study.
I'm sorry, I
Okay, we don't have water.
You can, you can write to us.
I will. We don't have water in Western Washington County. You need to look into that, okay? It's just, this, this is a cart before the horse. Please vote no and give us more time to do a correct study. Thank you.
Thank you, Ayla. Next, we have Dale Feek and Greg Mecklem. Please go ahead for up to three minutes. After Greg, or Dale and Greg, we have Alan Katrin and Karen Schmidlin. Thank you.
Who's first?
Dale, please go ahead.
Thank you, Dale. Yeah, go ahead. My name is Greg Mecklem. My family and I operate 280 acres.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I should have stated, we ask everyone to start with their full name and address. Thank you.
Let me ask you also, do you have this map? Okay. My name is Greg Mecklem, and I live at 12995 Northwest Bishop, outside of North Plains, Hillsborough, Oregon. My family and I operate 280 acres of forest land and farmland, and I've lived in Western Washington County for more than 50 years. And I'm here to tell you that, why excessive expansion of the North Plains urban growth boundary is a terrible idea. It allows rapid growth of commuter suburbs, and it drives another stake in the heart of agriculture in this county. It creates speculative pricing, young people can't afford land, creates unsafe transportation for farm machinery, it creates housing that's unaffordable for agricultural workers, and it's off-public transit. There shouldn't be There shouldn't be one unit of housing built in North Plains that is not multifamily housing. And here's the reason why, if you look at this map, everything in red and orange is Class 1 and Class 2 farmland. North Plains exists because it sits in the belt of the very best farmland in Towalton Valley and probably the Willamette Valley of Oregon. That belt starts at the Halvetia interchange with the Sunset Highway and extends to Dersham Road along the Sunset. There is no other land in Washington County that equals the quality of this soil in this belt. North Plains should not expand in any direction out over this land without very good reasons why. The idea that they're going to create some community with parks and stores out over this land is a travesty. And if you look at the second page on this map, the red and, excuse me, the blue and the green lands are those that exceed 10 to 20% of Class 1 soils. You see the larger block of much of the ag land in Washington County in yellow, and it's less than 5%. You cannot find this land anywhere else. The only other two blocks of this size are under Rondler Acres and the city of Sherwood. If you take this land to expand, to create another commuter suburb, it is just a disaster for farming in Washington County, and it is a huge mistake. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. I'll advise the audience not to make demonstrations, please. Go ahead.
Chair Lockwood and Commissioners, I'm Dale Feek. I've lived in Washington County since 1966, I started as a fifth-grade teacher in Forest Grove, but I've enjoyed that. My address in Forest Grove is on record, I particularly don't like to tell it to everybody in the community where I live, but I live in Forest Grove, but you have it on record. I gave you, I wanted to give you two documents, and I sent them through the Planning Commission and through Todd, and I think you got them, and I had to change it because I was told that you couldn't do it with active links and attachments, so I just copied them all, and you got a great big longed email from me. One thing you couldn't get from me is this document that I handed to you tonight, and it has a document, well, the reason for that is, my understanding that the North Plains development staff used a consultant from Hillsborough, and during that time, they talked about how they're going to, the economic development, I think, was based upon Echo-Northwest studies. At least it was for Intel, and it was paid for by Intel, Intel did the study, but it's paid by Intel. And the problem with that was, it was only an economic study, and I asked the person that actually did the study before they made a presentation, and said, why didn't they do a cost-benefit analysis? And they said, well, because Intel didn't ask us to, they only asked us to do an economic study. And I assume that's similar to what's been done in North Plains, economic only, not cost-benefit. And so what this is, and I hope to be able to give to you a document that you can open it up, because in that, it challenges this whole idea of just economic development, economic development. The US Chamber of Commerce, the US Chamber of Commerce has sued, in essence, because they thought carbon was okay, carbon's good for the environment. They sued using that argument. So the US Chamber of Commerce, a lot of little chambers don't belong to the US Chamber of Commerce, but Hillsborough does, and so you've got to be careful when you talk about people that recommend Chamber of Commerce's. Now, in this document, it says "The Myth of Smart Growth," because I noticed down here somebody said "smart growth." Take a look at what this document says, if you get to it in links, about smart growth. "More expensive is more expensive: How Sprawl Infrastructure Bankrupts Oregon Communities." So please look at those eight documents there when you get them, and you can open the link. One of the things they present is data centers. Mike Rogaway's done excellent work on data centers, he got an award for it. Data centers provide no jobs, very few people, and create, take a lot of land, same thing with warehouses. And so they're saying, oh, we'll have data centers. You don't want data centers, data centers, energy and money, and I'm done. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Dale. We have next Alan Katrin, I apologize if I'm mispronouncing anything here, Karen Schmidlin, and then Luis Herrera and Corey Wright, coming up next.
Good evening, my name is Alan Katrin, and I live on West Union Road, and I'm one of the, my address is on your list there, and I'm one of the parcels in consideration for being brought into the UGB. Just a little bit about our property, my folks bought the property in 1949, so about 74 years ago, and then they raised their family of five children there, which I am the youngest, and I am 66, my oldest sister is 78 years of age, all suffering from various medical issues and things. My dad died in 92, and then my mom had lived there, they had the fire department to learn to burn on their household house that he had built alone, and had a manufactured home. So after my dad had passed, my mom wanted to still live there. So since there was a manufactured home, we applied through the county and got a temporary health hardship permit, and we built the home next to her. The way the laws are set up, not any other homes could be built on the property, it's zoned exclusive farm use. We've had another local area farmer farm, about 25 acres is what would be part of the farm area that everybody's been talking about. It may be good soil, but most farmers rotate their crops, do clover one year, a couple of years, and grass seed, and then maybe wheat in this area. Our land is wet enough that it only can grow grass seed, you know, enough. And everything growing on there would never be enough to support a family. We tried to sell the property before, my folks didn't have much money at all, but they had that land for us kids, and we're getting older, and we tried to sell it, and nobody would take it. Now, the city of North Plains is on two sides of us, but up right here and then right across the street, they have utilities, infrastructure, water, sewer, right next to our property. So from a business standpoint, that makes sense to me. I just want to say a little thing about the cities, they've been in contact with us from years ago now, talking about that, getting input, wanting to know, and we've been a part of that. So I can, I understand everybody's argument, whether you're talking climate change, animals, or losing farmland, but we can't stop growth altogether. I'm for adopting the UGB, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
I'm Karen, is this on? I'm Karen Schmidlin, I live on Sellers Road, outside of Banks. And although I'm in Banks, one of the things that I was concerned about, and, oh, and I just wanted to say thank you all for being here, and thank you for having this meeting in the evening when people can show up, because it's hard for people that are working to show up during the day for things. And I appreciate the thoughtful questions that a lot of you asked on this, too, I think there were some very good questions, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate your time. And so anyways, you know, one of my big issues is the water, because I live in Banks, I live outside of Banks, but even though I live outside of Banks, you guys are probably aware of some of the water issues that we have in Banks, you know, we kind of have had some issues with that, and we've been trying to figure out, you know, how we're going to, how Banks is going to grow, and how we're going to have enough water for everybody. And with North Plains just being down the road from us, you know, my concern is how that's going to affect the water needs of North Plains, how is that going to affect our water table in Banks if a lot of water is being taken from the water table? How's that going to affect our water in Banks? Because that's a big issue for us. But, and aside from that, also, you know, the whole affordable housing thing, you know, it just doesn't seem to be addressed very well, and I know, I know that there's been a lot of people that have spent a lot of time on this, and I appreciate the North Plains folks and all the time that they have spent on this. But affordable housing, I mean, I have kids, and it's, it's hard to afford a house, you know, when you're a young person, and even though, you know, they're making a decent wage, but we have to look out for those people, you know, and I think it needs to be addressed. And then the farmland, I know people disagree about this, but, you know, the bottom line of it is, is we do have some of the richest farmland of anywhere in the world here in our, in our valley and in that area around North Plains. And once that land is not farmland anymore, it's just not, you don't get it back. And, you know, there may be the argument of, oh, well, they're not growing food there. Well, they're growing something there, so whatever doesn't get grown there is going to have to get grown somewhere else, and somewhere else, and somewhere else, and so pretty soon, there just isn't anywhere else. So we do have to have those concerns about that rich farmland and how productive it actually is. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. Next, we have Luis Herrera and Corey Wright. Following, we will call Debbie Van Damelin and I believe Don Maltin.
Good evening, Chair Lockwood and the rest of the commission, my name is Corey Wright, and I live at 31950 Northwest Meadow Drive in North Plains. I have been a homeowner in North Plains for the last 15 years. My view used to be to the North Plains post office, just fields. Since then, in those 15 years, I now have a view of 24 townhomes. And I could, they can literally touch their neighbor through their kitchen windows, that's how close they are. Not only that, but now that we have the new housing development that just went in by the new Alpha Lottie Ridge, those homes went for $650,000. The new houses coming in are not affordable. Both my husband and I work for Intel, make good salaries, we would not be able to afford a home in North Plains currently with our salaries, so I don't really have much more to say, other than the development that has been happening has not been for North Plains, unfortunately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Luis Herrera, I've been living in North Plains for, what, like 12 years now, maybe, something like that? And one of the things that was most attractive to me, my wife and my family, was that North Plains was a small community. It reminded me a lot of the community that I grew up in, in California. When I grew up there in California, we didn't have sidewalks, much like North Plains, old North Plains, not the new developments. We don't have sidewalks in North Plains. All of this new development that's been happening, all of the new construction, it's really beautiful, those people in those new developments have nice, beautiful parks. We had a park right close to our house, I live in a manufactured home because I can't afford a regular home like everyone else. I work for the county, but I can't afford to live in North Plains necessarily if it wasn't for that manufactured home that I purchased. So all these new developments have nice, beautiful parks, we have the Purple Park, which is like a triangle-shaped little area near a creek. It constantly floods, we had a brand-new playground that was painted purple, I wonder if that's why they called it Purple Park. Residents complained, I imagine, that it's always flooded even during the summer, and so they came through with a bulldozer, bulldozed it down, now it's just grass, while all these other developments have these little fountains that they get to enjoy because they have money and Teslas and everything else. And I fear that everything that is beautiful about North Plains, like breathing in the air when you're driving through the farmlands in the morning, all of that's going to disappear. I know that they say that there's no plans for specific warehouses and things like that, but you all know what's happened with the construction all around Washington County. As soon as that land is made available, those things are going to happen, and somewhere along the line, our voices are going to be lost in the process, and there will be a 500-acre warehouse, or data center, or whatever else they're going to build there. And what are we going to lose? What are we going to replace that? We're going to replace farmland that is unique with data centers and warehouses and commercial land. You know, I'm not against growth, I understand that growth has to happen, but the growth that is happening isn't happening for our community, it's happening for the sake of growth, so that we can have more tax revenue, so that we can build, what, a Towalton Valley type recreation center? We live in North Plains, we walk, you know? We go outside and we walk, we don't have sidewalks, we don't really have streetlights either. When we walk in the area that I'm at, it's dark, we have to wear vests, there was a person that was run over because it's so dark there on, they still have that little memorial on one of the stop signs. Old North Plains is getting left behind for all this new construction and all these new people that are moving here from Portland, and I believe that we can do better. I'm not necessarily against the expansion, I don't think it has to be the largest expansion in the history of Oregon, I don't think it has to be there. I know that some of the members were talking about.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but you're out of time.
Just one more thing, I had all this written down, but I didn't even touch it. One of the people on the council were indicated that it takes five years, six years down the line to build all these things with all the expansion, all the boundaries that we're doing, right? Well, five, six, 10 years from now, when they're starting to build all these things, what are we going to start doing? We're going to start planning for the next 20-year expansion? How much of this farmland, how much of North Plains is going to be left after the next expansion?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I have to stop there. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Is Debbie Van Damelin and Don Maltin here? Okay, thank you. Next will be Nellie McAdams and Roy Van Raden. Oh, are you Don?
Yes.
Thank you, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Debbie Van Damelin, and I live at 29900 Northwest West Union Road, and I'm here speaking on behalf of our family. My husband has lived here his whole life, my husband, Mike, was a volunteer firefighter in North Plains for 32 years. The family's land is 102 years old. At one time, it was a thriving dairy until 2008. We also farmed oat hay for the cows and wheat. We are, however, in support of the growth of North Plains, as we understand growth happens and it is inevitable. We have seen this growth happen surrounding our property, as we are right in the middle of it. In regards to our land, we'd like to see affordable housing, walking trails, a dog park, to accommodate the families that are living within this community. Growth would provide affordable housing, local employment, further support for current businesses. We have seen people and businesses come and go due to the lack of affordable rooftops. I have also heard many people wanting a grocery store and more restaurants, but currently that is not feasible. It is easy to focus on the negatives, we believe there is a lot more positives in growing North Plains to a thriving town that would benefit everyone. I want to thank the city of North Plains for doing a thorough job with studies for the continuation of the UGB, and I would like to thank you all here at the Planning Commission.
Hi, my name's Don Maltase, 2669, that's P.O. Box 2669, Vancouver. My family has owned approximately 100 acres in North Plains for 30 years, bought the property from John Jackson, and I can remember 40 years ago, sitting in John's living room, he lived up in Tacoma at the time, and talking to him, and he said, well, you know, Don, someday you're going to be in the city. And he wasn't talking UGB, we didn't have that kind of language then, he said, but you're between the city of North Plains and Portland, and it will grow, and he said it needs to, but you're okay for a while. So he was right, it's been a while, it's been 30-some years. Our farm is dry-farmed, we grow a tall fescue. We have never sought to be excluded from future growth for a number of sound reasons, many of which were echoed by the city leaders tonight, but the utilities that are out there are stubbed to our property, stubbed to the properties to the east. The roads are stubbed in, our property is walking distance to downtown North Plains, but there aren't people living on the property right now that can walk to it. We're about an eighth of a mile from the intersection of Highway 26, which hopefully not as many people will leave the city if there's jobs out there. It was mentioned earlier why you. It was mentioned earlier why young people leave cities, leave cities. And I think certainly not the main reason, but certainly one of the integral reasons is they leave for jobs. There's no jobs in the city. I think the mayor mentioned that earlier. The future decision, the city of, the city's comments were made earlier, and people from the city, is that it'll save money to grow. And it's hard to believe, but it will actually save money for the citizens. The taxes are off the charts in that city. We talked about, are there going to be walking trails and, and things for the city out there? We've talked about creating an amphitheater actually on some of Van Domelen's property. So there's a lot of perks that can come with growth. It isn't all negative. Are there downsides to it? Certainly. We all like to live in a quintessential little area where we've got 100 acres around us and horses galloping across there, but it's not practical. If you want that, you just, you can't have it when you're right next to, you know, a corridor that has all the jobs produced that we could possibly hope for. We've been working with the city year-round for 30-some years and now certainly in the last 10 years. I don't think anybody could capitalize any better than your staff did as far as all the steps they went through and all the money that was spent, all the grants that were given. It's not tens of thousands, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars in man-hours that went into bringing this to fruition. Clean water services upsized the line to come through our property in anticipation of growth. The city, Hillsborough School District built a school there in anticipation of growth. So this doesn't come as a surprise to those of us who've been actively involved in the process. So thank you for your time. I was in the Planning Commission a long time ago. It's not a fun thing to do, I know all the time, not as much as it is tonight. So again, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you both for your testimony. Thank you. Nellie McAdams and Roy Van Raden. Following Nellie and Roy, we have James Fay and Jackie Dyke Jones.
Chair Lockwood, Commission, my name is Nellie McAdams, 9724 Southwest Lancaster Road, Portland. I testify in opposition to Ordinance 899, which would be the largest UGB expansion in the tri-counties outside metro and almost 10 times larger than the median UGB expansion in this area. While the EOA is acknowledged and the city may grow up to that amount, the city is not legally required to incorporate all of that acreage and must still prove need in order to expand by any amount. North Plains has failed to do so. The city based its need for industrial land on industries inside metro, but it boasts its location outside metro as a competitive advantage for cheap land and fewer land-use requirements. If North Plains was in metro, it would have given you a plan for infrastructure. Instead, it punts until after it's too late to vote no. Right now, the city can't afford to fix its sidewalks or secure a grocery store, so it would need outside funding. That would siphon resources and growth from inside metro and is contrary to Metro's 2040 Plan for North Plains to minimize the impact of growth on surrounding agriculture natural resource lands. The city's EOA mentions the semiconductor task force 16 times to justify its industrial land request. This report said there was no land for semiconductors, but after it was published, 10,000 acres of industrial land inside UGBs were identified that the task force overlooked. None of the 14 semiconductor funding applications have requested land inside or outside a UGB. And the city said in a recent article that it doesn't see a semiconductor plant as a possibility, so this land is not needed. Similarly, the city didn't look inside for housing or demonstrate a need for this amount of residential land. It failed to identify vacant and low-density land for infill or permit zoning like mixed-use commercial and residential. The housing needs analysis that the city passed at the same time as the UGB proposal and is not yet approved by LCDC expressed concern that North Plains has an existing lack of affordable housing. Homes in the city's newest developments start at $405,000, and single-family detached housing increased from 84% in 2000 to 88%. The plan would reduce this by only 4%. This housing type is the least affordable, most expensive to service, and most wasteful of land. The city's justification for growth is to increase tax revenue, but that is not a land-use criteria for your decision. And it's unclear how industries that receive tax breaks and expensive to service homes will add net revenue. Poorly planned development got North Plains into a deficit and will not get it out. Lastly, the city obstructed public comment. After improper notice invalidated their first vote, the city claimed the first decision was final and that public could only comment on amendments. They also called this a state-mandated expansion when the city is only required to plan not to grow at this scale or location. The city says most opposition comes from outside the city, but most support comes from outside the city, landowners who want to get rich and developers. Most North Plains residents I've spoken to hadn't heard of the expansion, and many farmers who rent land near town won't testify for fear their landlords will cancel the leases. For these reasons, please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Roy Van Raden. I live at 20905 Northwest Rock Creek Boulevard, Hillsborough. I support Ordinance 899. I believe that the city has done a complete and fair and comprehensive process as required by GOL 14. Yeah, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, James and Jackie. James Fay, Jackie Dyke Jones. Following, we have Larry Dyke and Dave Van Nash.
Good evening, Chair Lockwood and Commissioners. My name is Jackie Dyke Jones. I'm a fourth-generation farmer. I live off Roy Road in Banks, and I'm a steward of the land not only Banks but in North Plains and Roy. I am refreshed and hopeful tonight after experiencing a, an engaged and productive conversation among a planning commission. I'm also co-owner of Dyke Family Farm LLC, and we farm one field over from the west-sub area of the proposal. As a farmer, we provide carbon-capturing, safe and nutritious food and fiber for Oregonians and beyond. I am strongly opposed to Ordinance 899. I'm going to read a statistic from the Oregon Department of Agriculture Ag Statistics Directory PDF in support of my, as support for Oregon agriculture. Oregon agriculture directly and indirectly contributes 686,518 jobs, $29.71 billion in wages, $12.12 billion in taxes, and $2.85 billion in exports to the state. There are approximately one farmer ranch for every 112 people in Oregon, but that small percentage is an essential contributor to the state's economy. The highest-class soils should never be handled as simply disposable or Lego pieces. Farmland, farmland is finite and must be protected, as well as the supportive infrastructures for the industry's success and sustainability. It is not by accident that Oregonians have been working to keep our state beautiful and bountiful. For example, in all the presentation slide decks, the pictures, it's about agriculture, every single one, I checked. Washington County has among the most fertile lands. I passionately believe that it is wrong to destroy farmland, especially when there are 18,000 acres currently in the metro UGBs in the region Q for provide, providing thriving and healthy, livable communities. In, in mentioning healthy, thriving, livable communities, this topic of grocery stores keep coming up. There's one in the Q in North Plains in the urban growth boundary. So there's so much being talked about, there's like a sense of like threats and fears going on. It's really misleading. And of course, the landowners are willing to sell for millions of dollars. And I think that Washington County is in a position to show dedication to preserving our finite resources for generations to come. Their agribusiness is an economic driver not only in Washington County but the state of Oregon. If Washington County has 25% of EFU lands right now, and if it's potentially half of 1%, I need to check that, farmland being taken out, just wait until which legislative session, until North Plains goes and gets someone to say the next bill to expand the urban growth boundary again. This is short-sighted.
Excuse me, your, your time is up.
Thank you. Please be a steward of the land with your North Plains, Washington County, Oregon farmers. Thank you.
Hi, my name is James Fache. I live in 31806 Northwest Beltran Court in North Plains, Oregon. I lived there since 2013. You guys are, are paddock commissioners? I found a need to serve the community, so I was a paddock commissioner for North Plains for a few years, and then I became city council on my second term. A little bit of about when I first started in North Plains, my daughter was five, and we didn't know anybody, we were strangers in a strange land. So I told my wife, "Hey, let's have a really big birthday party for my daughter. Let's go all out. This way, her friends can come over and her parents can say, 'Oh, these guys are cool. Let's be their friends.'" So I did that. And while I was, while I was there, the mothers were lamenting that they had to go to the store, they had to drive 20 minutes to go to the store and then drive back again for milk or whatever they're going for, medicine. There's nothing in North Plains that is, that is sustainable. Kids who have teenagers, or, sorry, parents have teenagers, kids have to drive to Hillsborough. They have to drive at night or whenever to go find a small, part-time job to learn to be on time to work and wear your uniforms and, you know, do those first-job things. North Plains, as it is, is not sustainable. There has been some building going on, but the way things happen is they do it little bit at a time, tiny, tiny bits. And that happens, what leads to small places is houses. So now we have a tax basis for North Plains that is just income tax from the houses. And that's unsustainable because taxes are limited by a small amount per year that could go up, while the employees make more and more money. There needs to be businesses in North Plains in order to have, in North Plains be able to survive without becoming, I don't know, a welfare state. There has to be that expansion. The size of this is adequate. It is exactly what we need according to all the studies we had, and it gives a chance to plan things as a whole, not Legos or pieces of the puzzle at a time. We've got to have a big swath of something to plan and build accordingly. And I just wanted to come here and share that with you guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Larry Dyke and Dave Van Nash next, then David Santoro and Katie Miller.
Good evening, Chair Lockwood. My name is Larry Dyke. I reside at 34203 Northwest Mountain Dale Road in North Plains. I bought the 107-acre farm that I live on in 1981, 42 years ago. This farm that I bought for $3,000 an acre then, today, as a farm, it's worth $10,000 to $15,000. But for development, for industrial use, for data centers, chip centers, this $10,000 to $15,000 an acre land is now worth $600 to $1 million an acre. So consequently, 100 acres could be $100 million. Do you understand why North Plains has had such good luck in talking to all the farmers around there? They are more than willing to sell. I'm not. I'm opposed to North Plains. I'm a farmer. I'm sure most of you have seen or are watching the show Yellowstone, the series Yellowstone. If you realize it or not, that series could be North Plains. It's about land use. That's what Yellowstone is about. It's about protecting the land, saving the land from development, from casinos, from ski resorts. We want to save our land here, too. Developers and speculators are pushing their agenda. The chairman of the North Plain Planning Commission's a realtor. The mayor's husband's a realtor. The city council proposes bringing in to the UGB 855 acres, more than doubling the town in size. As one of the people involved in the grand bargain, Dave and I both were, in 2014, North Plains had a seat at that table for the Washington County Rural Urban Reserve Coordinating Board. The mayor of North Plains was on that with us, and he had one vote. Dave and I had to split one vote. Ag got one vote out of 15 cities that all had their mayors or representatives on the coordinating committee. North Plains, their mayor picked, he wanted to go north, south, east, and west, all four directions. Well, in the grand bargain, the grand bargain shut down the door to go south. So consequently, the land that you see, it was where North Plains didn't know where they exactly wanted to grow, but they reserved the chance of going those directions. City officials in North Plains have claimed the undesigned land around North Plains is theirs. This is a lie. North Plains is not entitled to any land. They can't justify, or the residents of North Plains vote to annex.
Excuse me, your time is up.
My name is Dave Van Ash. I reside at 36130 Northwest Ren Road, Cornelius, Oregon. Thank you, Commissioner, for allowing us to testify. Larry pretty well said it all. We got involved in the Metro Urban Reserve process. I think I was on the coordinating committee in 2008, so that went on for six years. And like he said, there were two farmers on that committee out of 15 cities. There was two of us. We got one vote. Every time we voted, it was 15 to 1. We lost. But we did eventually appeal, and we won the appeal, and the grand bargain was created because of that. You've got my letter, I think, I hope you all read this. I just got a few things to add. Those fingers that the chair asked about, those are swales. The land out here is rolling. Once in a while, there's a creek or a drainage ditch, but most of the time, we farm that. And it's Class 1 through 4 soil, and sometimes Class 4 in, in some of those draws is more productive than the rest because it holds, holds water better in the summertime. Our farm is an eighth of a mile from the proposed UGB expansion on the Dersham Road end. And we, we farm 2,300 acres, we own 1,000, but we own 250 acres on Northwest Melanie Road, and we're an eighth of a mile from this proposal. We never got any notice. We weren't contacted. Nobody asked us how this development was going to affect us. We have 250 acres of hazelnuts on that farm and grass seed. And I guess my fear is Melanie Road's a gravel road, but if we get all this development up to Dersham Road, Melanie Road's going to be a paved road. And I feel like my farm is trapped between Cornelius Forest Grove and now North Plains. And you know what the traffic is like out there? Our farm, our farm headquarters is on Susbar. Every day, there's another car on Susbar because of Cornelius. And when I hear North Plains whining about no grocery and no industrial and all this, reminds me of Cornelius. I, Cornelius was 600 people when I was a kid, and now it's 12,000, whatever. And it's the same old story. We need more land. We need to do it right this time. Thank you.
Thank you both very much. I'd like to ask the clerk, how many more people have, are we signed up to here?
We have about, let's see, a little, we've got 12, I think, and more online.
Okay, I'm going to call a five-minute break before we hear from the others. Please return to your seats and... Please return to your seats and...
Oh, thanks.
Does that better?
Sure, I'll go.
Oh, we don't have everybody. Oh, that's usually the women better in that situation, not the men.
Well, I'm a graphic designer, so double columns is no problem.
I don't see Rachel. In the bathroom. Okay, let's go ahead. Please, go ahead.
Okay. Hi Chair Lockwood and Commission. My name is Katie Miller. I live at 16211 Northwest Dairy Creek Road in North Plains. There we go. And I oppose the North Plains Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Plan as it is. I take the Dersham Road exit on the west side of the expansion home a couple times a week, and I'm really appalled that the city wants to pave over this area. I don't know, just this summer, I think there were sugarbeets on that land. There is also, just north of it, there's a glider field where people take like recreational glider rides so they can see over the, all the farmland in the area and the timberland. It's really beautiful, and I'm just torn that it's going to be paved over for some sort of industrial use. It is, so it's almost 700 acres of industrial land that they want. And it's not required. That's the thing. They keep saying that this expansion is required by the state, but the industrial land is a choice. The state is not dictating that North Plains expand and use industrial land. This is a choice. And I think that's been unclear in some of their communications to the people of North Plains. There are many official communications that say this is a state mandated expansion. But 855 acres is not being mandated to be expanded on too. Let's see. So I don't think, I think that we can reduce the size of the industrial land. I mean, heck, we live, like, people can drive seven minutes to Brookwood Parkway area. You know, there's so much industrial land in Hillsborough. Like, I feel like it is too much, and that needs to be reduced. And, you know, farmers support the local economy as well. But in order to do that, the land really needs to remain undeveloped for them to do that. Also, in my written testimony, I gave you a chart sourced from, let's see, Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. So it's data from the Tri-County area. And the North Plains expansion is the largest since 1979 in the Tri-County area. This is outside the Portland metro, of course, so that's since 1979. It's even larger than Sandy's 2017 expansion. And of course, Sandy has a far greater population than North Plains. So North Plains does not need this excessive amount of land. The city is attempting to take too much. One last point. The people of North Plains are really against excessive growth. I was volunteering for the referendum to gather signatures. We did get 340 signatures, and we're only required to get 243, so we're just waiting for those to be accounted. But 90% of the people who I knocked doors on were appalled at the amount of land that the city wants to take to grow upon.
Excuse me.
Okay. Please vote no to the expansion as is, and please ask that North Plains reduce the expansion. Thank you.
Okay.
My name's David Santoro. Live at 38320 Northwest Harrington Road, Cornelius. I'm a fourth-generation farmer. Our family farm is located in South Washington County. I reside on Harrington Road and Roy, and I'm also a mechanic who does service calls all across the county at a variety of job sites. My family has seen a lot of changes in the county in the past 115 years, and has made a lot of changes in the past 115 years. I am opposed to the North Plains UGB expansion for a number of reasons. Our family is going through so much turmoil and devastating hardships due to the consequences of the South Hillsborough expansion. During the process, we were talked to and talked at. Our questions were not directly answered, and we were brushed off the whole time as insignificant stakeholders because we were outside of the South Hillsborough expansion by 20 feet. Taking farmland out of production impacts everyone forever. North Plains is not a remote island and must be held accountable to make more inclusive decisions with its stakeholders. As a neighbor, south of 26 on Dersham Road exit, the traffic from the North Plains sprawl will be cutting through the other EFU zones. During the South Hillsborough expansion meetings, our family asked where all the traffic was going to go, and will it still be safe moving equipment on these roads? We were told the traffic would only be going by north and that there would be no traffic impacts to the south. Construction is still taking place. Our family struggles with and contends with the dangerously increased traffic, increased wear on the roads without efficient maintenance, increased trespassing and turnarounds on our private property, collapsed wells during the pipeline construction, and so many other things that could have been mitigated or prevented. There are many tech industry consequences to the environment and the natural resource neighbors. When the Aloha Intel campus went in on 198th, it literally changed the weather. It randomly snows for several blocks around the campus. As an isolated weather system proving that the tech fabs have devastating environmental footprint, tech industry should not be housed on Oregon's world-class soils. I'm also concerned about North Plains utilities planning. When my family in South Hillsborough were going to buy appliances at the local Home Depot, they were asked what their address is, and the clerk instantly started selling them additional warranty because the standard warranty did not cover the voltage spikes. These spikes are Intel-related and are 600 to 700 times more likely in their residence of the South Hillsborough. Once you tear off the life-supporting topsoil and send it to a landfill, you do not get it back. A tiny little note on the picture that said that it was just grass around North Plains, Oregon is the grass seed capital of the world. So we want grass here. Thank you.
Thank you both. For those who are still waiting to testify, since it's getting late, if, please don't repeat material that's already been stated. But we welcome your testimony. So who is next?
Thank you. Next, we have, I'm sorry, Katie Miller and Sarah McFarland. Okay, that's, I thought I saw your name earlier. Sarah McFarland and Tim Scallia. Thank you. And then we will have John Platt and Debra Van Raden-Davis.
Thank you. Sarah McFarland, my address is 860 Northeast Third Avenue in Hillsborough. I am not an Oregonian by birth. I grew up in the Seattle area, was born in Washington. A little bit of history because of where I was born. I lived in Kent, Washington, which is south of Seattle, and that is home, was home to the Kent Valley. And to farmers up there in the 1900s, the soil, the volcanic soil that was in the Kent Valley was some of the absolute best farming land in the entire Pacific Northwest. Until the 1970s, when Boeing moved in. And they bought up all of the cheap farmland, and then all the other industries came in. And so as a young person in my teens, I watched the beautiful green Kent Valley change almost overnight. Within two decades, the entire valley that you can see from I-5 up on the hill had turned into industry. And no more of that beautiful lush farmland was left. When I moved to Hillsborough in 2000, I was ecstatic to see all the farmland around me. But unfortunately, in the last two decades, I've seen the population double, huge housing projects have been allowed, and all the farmland around me is turning into industrial parks and data centers. Also, I have been a CSA member at Stoneboat Farm here in this area since 2017, and they provide me with produce that is 90% of my diet and is affordable food for me. So I have a personal reason to see that our existing farmland needs to be protected from overdevelopment. Our entire community needs sources of healthy, affordable food. So don't let what happened to my hometown of Kent, Washington, and the valley happen to our farmland down here. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tim Schallik. I live at 13108 Northwest Mason Hill Road, outside of the North Plains city limits. I'm here representing the North Plains Library Board. We have seven members on our board. Four of them live in the city of North Plains, and three of them live outside the city limits of North Plains because our library in North Plains serves not only North Plains, but some of the surrounding area. We are in support of the expansion of the urban growth boundary of North Plains. We believe that the city has done an excellent job of planning. We believe in planning. We believe that you need to look far out, and this is a base plan, and that will encourage people who are interested in investing in our community, know where the community is We are also part of Washington County's Library Cooperative, and we actually play a big role in that. So we believe that, we believe that when cities combine and work together, and that you have the responsibility to look at how everything in Washington County fits together, that Washington County will be a better, a better place to live. And you need to decide, and maybe it's difficult, but what place does really North Plains play in Washington County? We believe at the library, we give out more books in Washington County than out of our collection than comes into us. Also, economic, the growth of North Plains, if I were, has been important because you can see our, we have more foot traffic now as the planned growth is taking place. We're lending out more books. And we have, through that process, if you look at us like a small business, we are able to better serve our community. Our community members can ride bikes to the library, they can walk to the library, and they can drive to the library. But there is nothing else really into North Plains that there's no grocery, there's no drug, there's no hardware. And part of that is because there's not enough population to support that. So I, we believe North Plains need to grow. And as it grows, in the library, we're seeing the fruits of that growth. As I said, we've been able to increase our staff. We've been able to increase the services we provide the city in the outlying areas. And so we believe looking ahead 20 years is good, is good business, and we think the city has done an excellent job in developing their plan. Thank you for listening.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Could John Platt and Debra Van Raden-Davis please come? Then we will have Greg Melonowski and Charles Hopewell.
Madam Chair, and members of the Commission, thank you so much for the opportunity to testify in opposition to ordinance 899. My name is John Platt. I reside at 23269 Northwest Youngen Road and operate Halvacia Winery and Vineyards. And in 1973, I was working with Osberg, and I was also a director of the Northwest Environmental Defense Center, and was invited to testify along with representatives of the ag industry and the timber industry in favor of Senate Bill 100. And a lot of the reasoning that went behind that amazing alliance that took place at that time was the fact that the timber industry and the ag industry did not want to use, did not want to lose their land base, not only because it was the source of their revenue, but also because loss of the land base would result in the loss of the vendors who supported farming and who supported timber in Oregon. And environmentalists, of course, were interested in seeing the farmland preserved, not only for its intrinsic value, but also because of the wildlife and the beauty. and the beauty that it brought to Oregon. I live about eight minutes from North Plains and visit North Plains practically every day. I use the gas stations there. Stop in the resale shop now and then, use Dyke's Garage. Stop in the grocery store that's there as well. There are a couple of places, though, I can't go to anymore. One was a hardware that supported farming in North Plains. It was right in the middle of town. And also, the New Holland tractor dealer, who, from whom I was able to get different parts for the tractors that we use in the vineyard. Those are no longer there. As was indicated a little earlier, that's in part because of the loss of agriculture and the limitations that are placed on agriculture at the present time in that area. And what I fear is that by going a little further down the road with 899, that we're going to face many of those same results. And it is really a slippery slope, the loss of what is some of the best farmland, not only in Washington County, not only in Oregon, but in the world. I have one other issue that I'd like to raise with you in closing, and that is the, sort of the cart before the horse, horse before the cart issue of accommodating growth. 14, Goal 14 doesn't require that the, that the city accommodate growth, except reasonable growth. It uses the term reasonable. Reasonable is really what counts in terms of the definition and that definition hasn't been discussed here. Finally, I would like to incorporate by reference the letter that Erin Nichols submitted to the Commission on September 20th, as well as Nellie McAdams' testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Debra Van Raden-Davis. I live at 33499 Southwest Reedwig Road, Cornelius. I'm here in support of the UGB expansion. I, my family has been in the area for 60-plus years and I, I believe in smart growth and I think that the folks of North Plains have done a great job of listening and focusing on smart growth. And I, I know that the job you have is difficult as the job they had is and I just wish everybody good luck because I know that everybody here has a legitimate, you know, position and this is a tough one. So, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you. Greg Melonowski and Charles Hopewell, followed then by Chris Edmonds and Rudy Kadlob.
Greg Melonowski, 13450 Northwest Springville Road. I've had a background in planning. I've been working with the county and doing community planning CPO system for about 43 years now. And I worked for Washington County directly for about eight years. A couple of things I heard that caused me a little heartburn. State law, what does it require? It requires you to allow growth. It does. It does not require you to expand the urban growth boundary. There's other ways of allowing growth without expanding it. If North Plains sat on an island, you would see all kinds of other developments still going on, but probably not strictly by fill. The other thing to keep in mind is the balance, a balance is needed of affordable housing. You should require an equal amount of land already in the UGB be rezoned for affordable housing in advance. And remember that for every acre zone for 14-unit an acre affordable housing, you're going to need two less acres of the 800,000, $500,000 to $800,000 housing being built on the seven-unit per acre land. Because that 14 will subtract from those. Do they need some additional land? Possibly. But if you have them rezone the existing area, those folks with the homes on the big lots aren't going to be forced to tear their houses down and build condos. But when it comes time to sell, it might sell to a person who's looking at a little different project than just painting the house. I heard somebody say that we have to add the ground first and then go work on the housing. And that's for people who like to go grocery shopping without looking to see what they've got first. I'm guilty of that and my wife announced I have, you know, four pounds of almond meal now, four bags. And I, I really ought to check it out before I buy some. But the point of it is, in Portland, the city of Portland, which does things a little differently, they rezoned their ground before they did their housing need to add hundreds of acres of ground for affordable housing in Portland. And then when they did the need, they discovered they didn't need to put ground in for McMansions. So, there's a recipe for how we do this and it's important that the recipe be followed. And you don't necessarily have to start out by saying, "Well, this guy here would like to see 120 acres of this ground built with houses that are not going to be affordable." The other thing I want to tell you quick before my time runs out, you can get a report for North Plains that shows how many people in North Plains who make less than 25 bucks an hour don't live in North Plains and have to commute to work there. See how many of the homes they built in the last 20 years, since the last one. How many homes just built in 20 years are affordable for those people who can't afford housing in North Plains? You might get a surprise and you might find out more of the same is not going to fix anything. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman Lockwood, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Charlie Hopewell. I reside at 2088 Northeast Jackson, or Josephine Drive here in Hillsborough. I'm here in support of passage of 899. We own property in the southwest corner of the Glenco Highway 26 intersection. And so, I just wanted to claim that right up front. I'm in support of the passage of this and I'm also in support because I was a member of the study committee that actually participated in this. And while I appreciate the fact that many members of the community that are present mentioned that they had not been notified and so forth, I've been walking through this process for the last two to four years. And we had plenty of time for public comment and I cannot remember a time when we actually had any public comment. While we were going through the process of really trying to take a look at, where do you draw the boundaries of growth? What I hear this evening in many of the cases and as the previous testimony just offered, is that if there are issues of fair housing, if there are issues of the process of LCDC, those need to be taken up with those entities. But with the city of North Plains has followed the process and the county, Washington County, has followed the process that has been set out by mandate. And I believe it is your responsibility and maybe it's helpful for all of you to take a step back from the testimony and say, "What are we actually, as a planning commission, required to do? And what would we like to do?" Those are two very different things that I hear in testimony tonight. I'm glad I'm sitting in this chair and not yours, by the way, because I'm not sure how it would be, how I could peel apart that which is fact and that which is opinion. And while I appreciate the strong passions of opinion that have been offered tonight and I do appreciate those strong opinions, I have an agricultural background. I've also worked in manufacturing and I know what economic growth can do for a community. North Plains is trying to take, be proactive, to be able to set boundaries so that they can vision. But it will be very difficult for them to vision if they don't know what those boundaries are. Put yourself in their position. Think about the fact that if you were to want to expand a home or you were to want to expand a business or you want to expand a city, do you not know, need to know what your property lines and limitations are around you before you plan your vision? Thank you very much for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Edmonds and Rudy Kadlob. Then we will have Lori Furrow and Denise Keir?
I thank you.
My name is Chris Edmonds. I'm at 525 Third Street in Lake Oswego and I'm here representing five property owners who own land south of West Union Road, west of Jackson School Road and Northway Highway 26. It's an area that's currently bordered on three sides by urbanization. We, my role with this group is to coordinate amongst those five property owners to make it efficient for the city to work with us through this planning process. And I've been engaged with the city for the last couple of years. Grateful for your service and that you're staying late for this testimony. So, the plan in front of you is the result of an eight-year effort that began with community visioning in 2015. The city's been working through this publicly for years. It represents thousands of hours of work from city leaders, staff and volunteers, consultants from DLCD and ODOT, not to mention all the collective input from city residents who helped shape this decision through an inclusive, transparent and careful process that complies fully with the spirit and letter of Oregon's land use framework, the urban rural reserves process and the grand bargain. The economic opportunity analysis has been signed off on from DLCD and the housing needs analysis is based on PSU's unbiased population forecast data. The EOA has been acknowledged by the state. These are the facts before you under the state's land use process. Voting no on this ordinance would not change that. It would just place the city in the position of being out of compliance with Oregon law. I've heard many appeals for you to step in to change Oregon's land use processes, renegotiate the grand bargain and decades-old agreements, mandate density or not, or unwind an economic opportunity analysis that was adopted by the state of Oregon early this year. These voices may have points, but this isn't the forum or within the scope of this decision. It's disheartening to see so many folks here in opposition, who I respect, who readily claim to revere our land use system and are now asking you to ignore parts of it. It's a balanced set of rules that we all have to follow. We can't be cherry pickers. So, simply put, the city undeniably needs land to accommodate growth. A decision now to delay this decision means delaying the city's planning process, delaying housing for workers at a time of rapid employment growth in the region. You're going to have a lot of new residents here in Washington County and they need places to live. It also means stifling economic opportunity for this city at a momentous time, leaving North Plains out of the momentous forces that are shaping global marketplaces. So, the city's followed the letter and spirit of the law in reaching its decision. It's been transparent and inclusive at each step. It's been careful and thoughtful about its requirements. If this body also follows the letter and spirit of the law, it will approve ordinance 899. Thank you so much.
My name's Rudy Kadlob. 9420 Southeast Lawn Field Road, Clackamas, Oregon. I'm CEO of Coast to Pacific Communities. We're the co-developer of a Ranco station here in Hillsborough, Vilbo in Wilsonville and other large-scale master plan communities throughout the Pacific Northwest. I've been working in North Plains since prior to the previous urban growth boundary expansion. I think Stuart King and I are the, probably the longstanding folks involved in planning in North Plains. The last expansion yielded two excellent new urban pedestrian-friendly communities in Sunset Ridge and Bryn Hill, of which the city I know is quite proud. In the last five or six years, I've been participating as a volunteer in visioning and also represent landowners on the north side of the city. I've personally been involved with transportation, planning meetings, citizen advisory meetings on vision, reviews of market studies, the housing needs analysis, the economic opportunities analysis. The city officials have gone above and beyond to receive citizen input. We've had dozens of meetings for volunteers, open houses, ice cream socials, many meetings with the Planning Commission and the City Council. And I've actually asked for and received individual meetings with the city manager, the mayor, many of the planning commissioners, the planning director, the finance director, because I asked to, to speak with them and they willingly agreed to, as they would with any other citizen. I hear a lot of folks here say, "We didn't know anything about this," but there's been plenty of opportunities to, to voice one's opinion prior to this evening. City's been open book throughout its efforts and thorough in its efforts to get this expansion process right. They've included Washington County planning, Washington County transportation, as well as Clean Water Services, DLCD and their planning efforts. North Plains sits in the path of progress in the Silicon, Silicon Forest, adjacent to one of the regions of major highways and one of the nation's most outstanding sporting venues, Pumpkin Ridge Golf Club. This expansion will provide much-needed land for job growth in Washington County as well as the commensurate housing needs. This expansion is critical to sustain a healthy economy in Washington County over the next 20 years. I urge you to adopt ordinance 899. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now Lori Furrow and Denise Keir? Keir, thank you. Next, we will have Erin Nichols, who's the last person signed up for the audience. We will request, or we'll make a call for people who didn't get a chance to sign up.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Denise Keir and I live at 3806 Northeast Lincoln Street in Hillsborough, Oregon. My family arrived here in 1841, part of the original Sinclair family from expedition from White Plains, Manitoba, Canada. I would like to say that our indigenous ancestors always considered the effect of a decision on five generations. Tonight, we seem to be very microscopic. I, I suggest we be more macroscopic because the, the situation of the environment around the world is horrible and it's getting worse and worse. I'd also like to say that over 50% of our farmland has been lost in the last 25 years in Washington County. When we consider the best use of farmland, we must be macroscopic and think of ways to reverse climate change. And on that note, I've written a small poem. It's the environment, stupid. This isn't land use. This is land abuse. It's not about saving the land. It's about saving the planet. It's not about increased tax revenues. It's about surviving the climate changes we see happening all around us. It's not about increasing, increasing jobs in traditional fields. It's about increasing jobs in emerging fields to save the planet. For those of you chasing the almighty dollar, what good will that do on a planet where short-minded humans are killing it? For those of you chasing fame, a reputation, what good will a fine name do on a planet that short-minded humans are suffocating? For those of you chasing a political career where name recognition is of the greatest import, what good will that do when your followers are being poisoned by short-minded humans dumping cancer-causing chemicals? The most beneficial way to use land to combat climate change is to farm it. I'm going to repeat that line. The most beneficial way to use land to combat climate change is to farm it. It's not environmentally conducive to build water-guzzling and polluting icy plants and data farms. The healthiest children who inherit flawless genes eat for farm-fresh products, as do their parents. It is nutrition environmentally conducive to create, to work farms and use age-old methods to produce highly nutritious organic food. The most direct way to ensure a long and enjoyable life is to ingest clean food. Clean food farmed with sustainable methods will yield a healthier you, a healthier theirs and a healthier next generation forever after. Beyond all that, farming mitigates damage already done to this planet and ensures a predictable future for all the creatures, beings, both great and small. Be good to the earth and the earth will be good to you. Thank you.
My name is Lori Furrow and my address is 10785 Northwest Glenco Road, North Plains. I farm, we have a family farm, Furrow Farm, which is about three miles from, from North Plains. My brother is the primary farmer. He has hazelnuts and Christmas trees and cattle. And I have one acre and... And I have one acre, and I have chickens, and I have tea trees, so Camellia sensius, and it grows wonderful in my little plot. We love our land. We are a fourth-generation farmer. My grandfather, sorry, third, my grandfather bought the land, and we established it in 1936. He was a World War I veteran and used his pension to purchase the land. Then my brother and myself, and then my nephew is, he's also, he's a George Fox graduate, but he's farming with my brother and will hopefully be able to farm later. I have many concerns about this expansion, and I have to say that I don't feel like that we have been informed. I feel like we have been shut down to express our opinion. In January of 2018, the Oregonian published an article about the mayor, and it said, she had said, "That growth has been controversial here, with many longtime residents coming out against the plans." Sorry, that was the Oregonian who maybe summarized what she said. And it went on to say, "The answer may be, 'We want to keep our small-town independence,'" she said, "but we're growing, so now how do we do that?" And then again, the Oregonian said, "The answer may be tough for longtime residents to hear, but..." Sorry. "...so the city will need to embrace the changes happening around them." So I just felt like we really didn't have any hope that things can change, you know, that we had a say in this process. It wasn't until Smart, the, the, North Plains for Smart Growth, that the group, the farmers' group came out, and I just finally felt hope that we did have a say. And I went around and we did some petitions and spoke to people, and there, many people did not feel informed. Many people were against the growth, and it gave me hope that, yes, this growth is not, it does not have to happen. We love our land, we want to continue farming in this area for many, many more years. Thank you.
Thank you both.
Chair Lachwood, member of the, members of the Commission. My name is Erin Nichols. I live at 11,000 Northwest Jackson Quarry Road, and I farm next door at Stoneboat Farm, where I grow vegetables for about 500 CSA members. I really want to thank you for your careful consideration of North Plains Urban Growth Boundary Expansion. As you know, it's an unprecedentedly large expansion, and is likely to be one of the biggest changes in North Plains and the farming communities around it for the next few decades, if not generations. And I appreciate the serious attention you're giving to it. I'll say that before the break, the number of questions and the quality of questions you asked was significantly better than in six public hearings in North Plains, and I really appreciate that. There's a few things I want to say. I'm trying not to repeat what was said before. One is about the land and growing food on the land next to North Plains. First off, grass seed, if you eat meat, they eat grass, turns out, and if you want to have grass, you need grass seed. So to claim that's not food is ridiculous. Secondly, that isn't really the point. The point is that we can grow good food on good land. The best farmers, the best among us, can grow up to the quality of our land. We cannot grow better. There is many, many acres of rural reserve in Washington County. A very small portion is farmable, as when you see the map that North Plains likes to show, there are mountains on there. No one, no one is farming on the top of Shehala Mountain. And even the land that is farmable, the 30 or so percent that's farmable, most of that is not Class 1 and Class 2 soils. We had the ODA look at these, the proposed expansion area, and they said, I mean, Jim Johnson from the agronomist at ODA said, "This is some of the best soil in Oregon and most likely the world." This is not, this isn't a joke, this isn't like someone's opinion, this is the actual facts. Something else I want to point out is that this process has been very difficult to get into. You've heard two well-paid consultants say they had no trouble getting meetings with the mayor and with the city manager, and I have no doubt that they had no trouble. I'm sure they were part of the process right from the beginning. When I went and spoke to the one meeting, I believe, that was advertised for opponents of this, which was, I will add, on the last day of school at 2:00 in the afternoon, I was told that my opinion didn't matter, because I could talk to the county, I wasn't a constituent of North Plains. I can see North Plains from both my house and my farm. I'll also say, I was told that it was too expensive to send out a postcard to everyone in the mailing address. That was never done. I sent a postcard out to everyone in the mailing address, it cost about $100. This, I think, I think there's some disingenuous, some disingenuous outreach in this, and it's been harmful, as the previous person said. I'll also say, I was one of the people who helped collect the signatures and to sit at this referendum, we're 33% over what we need. And when we were knocking on doors, I knocked on hundreds of doors, and 70 to 90% of the people were against it and willing to sign a referendum to have this referred to the voters. So I think that's something to keep in mind as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. We will now actually go to testimony from individuals who had signed up to testify online, and then we will go back. So first, I wanted to call Holly Hutchison, who started speaking earlier. Holly, are you ready to testify? She may not be available. Another individual that we...
Can you hear me?
Thank you. Yes.
Okay, great. You've already heard a minute of my testimony, I'm not going to reiterate that. I'm Holly Hutchison. I live at 9416 Northwest Skyview Drive, that is in Portland. However, I'm here on behalf of my farmers, I'm the Executive Director of the Pacific Northwest CSA Coalition, we're 100 farms throughout the state. They grow food and they steward the land. 10 of these farms are in and around North Plains. Erin, who you've just heard from, is one of them. So I applaud North Plains for responding to the growth predictions and Oregon law by examining the needed changes to the urban growth boundary, and also for absolutely following the lengthy and established process necessary to do this. I simply want to point out a few critical issues that are not accommodated in their study. And the first is, there's no valuation for the loss of the EFU land. So their agricultural and forest compatibility analysis only uses one evaluation criteria, and that is the potential conflict with adjacent farm and forest uses. It's an oversight, it does not reflect the full value of the land under consideration. What about the value of the crops produced? What about the loss of the jobs when that land is overcome? None of this was considered in the expansion analysis. The second thing I want to point out, which I believe is an oversight, is when you convert the EFU to employment zoning, which is what their plan currently shows, it does not guarantee the high-paying jobs estimated in the housing needs analysis that they did, and I'm sure you have these documents and you can go through and look. There's no guarantee that the semiconductor industry will come to North Plains, and if they don't, what provides data processing centers and distribution warehouses from building on that newly designated land? So if those buildings do go in, there's going to be a much smaller amount of the high-salary careers that they're predicting, which then drives the estimate of the R-7.5 low-density housing units. So essentially, without accommodating that, their numbers for the housing that's needed are really just a guess, and not a very data-driven one at that. I would also like to point out, it's a lot easier to convert grass seed farms to food production than paved-over EFU or warehouses to food production. Class 1 farmland is finite, and we need to plan for the future. Just one last point, if the urban growth boundary review process had truly been transparent and inclusive, there would not have been so many upset community members here giving testimony tonight. Thank you so much for your time for this extraordinary long meeting, and for all the hard work you're doing.
Thank you for sticking with it and sharing your testimony. Thank you. The next person signed up online to testify is Wendy Mortensen. Wendy, please go ahead. Following that, we will, actually, just, I'm sorry, Wendy, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Wendy. Please go ahead.
Wendy Mortensen, 17845 Northwest Solberger Road, North Plains, Oregon. And I have served on the Washington County Planning Commission for seven years and ROMAC for 15 years. That's a Rural Road Operations and Maintenance Committee. And my family's farmed land just north of North Plains, in the foothills of the Tuolot Mountains, for over 40 years. And our land has grown strawberries, Christmas trees, grains, raised turkeys, and is currently in intensively managed timber. In other words, this ground, fertile ground, you can grow anything. Just because it's in grass seed today doesn't mean it can't be in CSA or vegetable-growing, you know, in another time, because the land is so fertile. And I will concentrate on Washington County's timber resources, since that's what I'm currently growing. And forests cover 52% of Washington County, and 69% of that is privately owned. The Tuolot Mountain Range, forming the northern backbone of North Plains, contains many working forests. Defined as a landowner or forest manager balancing sustainable timber production with protecting other resources such as water quality and wildlife habitat. And we have been able to profitably operate Shepherd's Rest Christmas Tree Farm because of the unique upland soils, ideal climate, close by timber and fiber mills, and the, most importantly, compatible uses surrounding us. We recently completed a commercial thinning at 18 years. For parts of the state and the nation, a comparative growth would take 25 to 50 years. And forest production is basically compatible with farm production. However, urban uses and even threat of them nearby or adjacent is problematic. An expanding North Plains growth boundary nearer to the Tuolot Mountains' upland working forests will have the following short-term and long-term impacts. Number one, logging and other contractors will be reluctant to bid or bid high because of liability involved with close proximity to residential housing or other sensitive uses. Secondly, prime farmland wedged between the expansion boundary and working forest to the north will be squeezed out of existence by urban pressures, exposing working forest to incompatible uses. So it will keep going and going. Three rural roads will be impacted by urban traffic. Four speculative land values will soar. Five complaints will increase regarding, among others, noise.
Excuse me? Your time is up?
Yes. It just goes on and on. But wildfire danger will increase. Infrastructure costs of Washington County, being on ROMAC, that's going to be significant, because we're going to have cross-rued traffic along or over the mountain. But in conclusion, the, North Plains is proposing to more than double its urban footprint, even that, even that, even though that will convert and threaten adjacent thriving farm and forest uses. And you need to decide, is this the best place for urban industrial expansion in Washington County? We request you review this expansion to determine if it balances the need to increase the amount of urban industrial land within Washington County, and is this the best place, given the negative impacts on existing and thriving rural industries? And I just did want to cover for...
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Your time is up. Thank you. Was there, were there any other members in the, or in the physical audience who wanted to speak? No? Okay, seeing none, we will go to the virtual audience. I do see one hand up. Ryan, would you like to provide testimony?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Great, thank you. My name is Brian Miller. I live at 16211 Dairy Creek Road in North Plains. I became involved with this because I did not hear about this through North Plains, but I actually heard about it on Facebook. I heard that they were going for, they actually voted on it when I learned about this. And actually, at the time I learned about it, it was already voted on, but they had to re-vote because they actually did not give proper notice to all the citizens of North Plains. They're supposed to use a minimum of a newspaper notice, they missed something on that, and they had to redo it. So I got to sit in on this second meeting. On that meeting, it was very dismissive, and it was pretty unnerving to feel so shut out. Actually, I drove a tractor in our Garlic Festival Parade, and on the tractor, we had a sign that said, "Friends of North Plains," and you wouldn't believe the amount of people that were so supportive and thankful of the message and the awareness we were spreading. I went door-to-door knocking on people of North Plains to get their signatures for the referendum, and there were people who would literally say, "I've been waiting for you. I heard about this, and I'm so happy you're here, I can't wait to sign." The way that this is so different between the people of the town versus the people making this decision is so lopsided, that it's, makes me just very sad to be in my situation where I have no power. So I urge you to please vote on my behalf and vote no, and really look closely at this, because this is some sort of collusion or something is not right, and I really urge you to look closely at this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I see another raised hand in the virtual audience, Heidi Jaeger. Heidi, would you like to go ahead? Heidi, I believe you will need to unmute yourself.
Thank you. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you. Please go ahead.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Heidi Jaeger, and I'm in support of the UGB expansion for North Plains. Did you, oh, you needed my address. That's 1855 Southeast St. Andrews Drive, Portland. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone in attendance for both their hard work and their personal opinions. All of this is so important. Growth and progress, these are two words that mean different things to different people. As a person who grew up around this area, I wish that it would all go away, or stop, or at least slow way, way down. But we all know, in our own ways and in our own life experiences, that holding on too tightly to what has been, or in a fight against the growth that is happening now, only leads to frustration and anger. That, or the fact is that because of the population growth in this region and the expansions that support that population and its needs, growth and progress is inevitable. In fact, it's been happening all around us since long before any of us were around. And whether we are conscious of it or not, we make lifestyle choices on a daily basis that support this growth. From where you buy your groceries and what groceries they are, to buying and using a cellphone and beyond, and beyond, and beyond. We take for granted that we even have these choices, but they do make a difference. But we do have them because of growth and progress. And some might say that these two words, growth and progress, typically instill a positive outcome in most applications for most people. My family has been landowners here in this vicinity since the end of the 1970s, and we have enjoyed the quiet community and surrounds that we know of as North Plains and the adjacent communities, much like the area of West Union where my siblings and I grew up. Slow-paced and rural, and all the good things that come with that. But even as far back to the 70s, we always knew that this region was growing, but thought that the impact of that would not... that it, the impact of that would not arrive for many years or even our lifetimes. Well, guess what? That growth and progress has finally caught up to us. Doesn't it make sense to have a say and some control in that growth and progress? I believe we can no longer fight the growth of local population and...
Excuse me, your time is up.
Okay. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Do any other members of the audience wish to speak now? Virtual or... Okay. I think that there are no more. Oh, we have two, Jim Long, actually. Jim, please go ahead.
Hello again. My name's Jim Long, 11755 Southwest 114th Place, Tigard, Oregon. I have a business address in North Plains, PO Box 33. I still, I lived on Pumpkin Ridge with a North Plains address for decades and still get some mail there for one of my, well, for a couple of my businesses. I've got a lot to say. I think, I'm going to start with a very first thing and I'll probably repeat it at the end. I've attended the Governor's Housing Productivity Advisory Committee and they have many recommendations that just changed the land use laws. The one that really strikes out for you tonight is that the Housing Productive Advisory Committee is looking at recommending eliminating SDCs, System Development Charges. So this is going to be an extra cost for the whole, whole development. I was, 50 years ago, I remember hearing Tom, Governor Tom McCall say, "We need to protect this thing called Oregon. We need to protect farmland." I was a member of CPO 8. I was the keynote speaker at the North Plains Centennial. And one of the things we did, I went, I went around with petitions back in 20 years, over 20 years ago in North Plains and got, we got a lot of signatures to get the, to get North Plains citizens the right to vote on annexations. And they voted a couple of times and shut them down. They, they, they did not get approved. And I think this is important because goal one of the land use laws is citizen involvement. And what better way to have citizen involvement than have people actually voting on whether they want to change the tax base, change the, change the, the city limits and all. So it's difficult and I would love to see the citizens be able to vote on this. Actually, it was David Hatcher, who later became mayor, who was the petitioner on that petition to give the citizens the vote. He was mayor for a number of years. Okay, does, does North Plains' proposed expansion include any significant natural resource areas? That's, that's one of my concerns. Like I said, I think growth costs money and if the state is going to have a recommendation to eliminate system development charges, that's going to change the whole economic basis for the city's plans. I think I'll leave it at that and submit more testimony for, at your next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe that's it. I think we're ready to close the public hearing. We are, it's officially closed. We're done. Next item on the agenda is Planning Commission Announcements.
Actually, if I could...
Yes, please do, because do we need to...
In order to, just to keep square with our procedural rules, can we, I would suggest a motion to continue this matter to a specific date and time.
All right.
I think we've identified November 15th at 6:30 PM. So the same basic thing, but if, we would need a motion on that specific date and time.
I move to continue this till November 15th?
Second. 6:30 PM.
At 6:30 PM?
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to continue this hearing to November 15th. Is there any objection?
Question?
All right.
Question? Will the record remain open for additional testimony or is there a similar question?
Public testimony? So this is a legislative hearing. It's not a quasi-judicial hearing, so it's not regimented in that way in our rules or required under due process. So I heard the chair close the public hearing. I think what remains is deliberation, discussion, and decision. And I, I take it that the motion is to move that to November 15th at 6:30 PM since it's now 10:30 PM today. So that is my understanding. If the, if...
That's what I understood, too.
Yeah, if folks want to continue the public hearing part, I think the chair would have to reopen the public hearing and then we'd need a different motion to continue the public hearing to, if, if we wanted to keep that all open. There's, it's a legislative process, so you can take into consideration additional information you receive, literally up until the time you vote. So it's not a matter of that. It's a matter of, do you want to leave it open for even more testimony? And I heard the chair close it. So we would need to reopen the public hearing if in fact that's what the PC wants to do.
I was just asking, I was, thanks for answering my question.
Okay, so we don't...
What you have left is, is deliberation, discussion, and decision.
At this point, could we entertain a motion if there was anyone who wanted to keep the record open?
Certainly. I, I would suggest that based on Roberts' Rules of Order, that be a motion to reconsider your closing the public hearing and reopen it and then continue that if that's what folks want to do. There is a motion on the table, but I have not heard anybody call the question. You're calling the question. You would like a vote on just continuing deliberation, discussion, and decision. Okay.
Correct.
We have a motion to, is this...
Call the question.
Call the question.
And the question is, has it been seconded? Actually, has it been seconded?
No.
Has it been seconded? So we have, as I understand it, we have a, a motion and second on the floor to continue this matter, not the public hearing, this matter to November 15th at 6:30 PM in this very room. I think you can discuss that motion.
Yes.
And then you need to take a vote on that motion.
Right. So Commissioner Will, is that meeting your needs here?
Yeah, yes, and I, I believe I was calling for a question, meaning I'm calling for the vote.
Right.
Unless, unless any obje, anyone objects and requests further discussion, I'd like to call for a question.
Okay. All right, so then we would ask the clerk to...
That would be my preference for roll call vote on that, on that motion to call the question on the motion.
And the motion is to...
To, to continue this matter to November 15th at 6:30 PM in this room.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Commissioner Frye?
I vote in favor of that.
Commissioner Havener?
Yes.
Commissioner Kaiser?
Yes.
Commissioner Milliman?
Yes.
Commissioner Maury B. Do?
Yes.
Commissioner Podar?
Yes.
Commissioner Will?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dai?
Yes.
Chair Lockwood?
Yes.
Thank you. It's unanimous.
And that, that's the end of my interruption. Sorry.
Thank you for interrupting. The chair got a little sleepy there. Next item, Planning Commission Announcements. Is there any planning commissioner who has something they want to share with us tonight? I'm not seeing anyone. Next item is adjournment. Is there any, oh, was there?
I just want to share that it did feel great to meet with everyone tonight, face-to-face, and I thank the public for coming out to be a part of this because it was a really great opportunity to really hear from everyone who is impacted by this and to sit with my commissioners and to be able to hear their questions and concerns.
Any other announcements, comments you'd like to share? Okay. Is there any objection to adjourning? All right, we are adjourned. Good night, everybody.